Hey, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Birmingham City Council for February 25th, 2020. Want to welcome everybody here. So, good morning, everyone.
Morning.
All right, good morning. All right, we're gonna have our invocation by Reverend Gwendolyn Webb, Molyneux Madam President, and the Pledge of Allegiance by Counselor Valerie Abbott. If everyone could please stand.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, most gracious Father, Lord God, we come to you this morning in your precious name, asking you to order all of our steps in your word. Order our hearts and our tongues, dear heavenly Father, in your word. Show us how to continuously walk in your word. Dear heavenly Father, we're truly thankful that for you have brought us this far by faith. Now, Lord God, we're asking you to bless all of these officials, dear heavenly Father, individually as well as collectively. Lord God, bless our mayor, dear heavenly Father. This is a tedious journey, Lord God, but you've equipped, you have equipped him for the job. Now continue to bless us, all of the foot soldiers, dear heavenly Father, those who have paved the way, Lord God, for all of these officials to be here. Now, Lord God, we're about to continue through with Black History Month. Lord God, let us always remember what all of us have done to get things the way that they are. Now, as we're about to close this prayer, dear heavenly Father, but never closing from your presence, continue to lead us, guide us, Lord God, and just love us and hold us, for it's in your precious name we pray, in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Good morning, Mr. Clerk.
Morning, sir.
How you doing?
Great, how are you?
Good. Can we do roll call, please?
Council President Pro Tim Alexander.
Good morning here.
Good morning. Councilmember Hillier. Councilmember Hoyt.
President.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Smithman.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods.
Good morning.
Good morning. President, uh, Councilmember Abbott.
President Paul.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good. All right, I need a motion for approval of the minutes, uh, from October 22nd and 29th, 2019. Okay?
Who made the motion, I'm sorry.
Uh, Counselor Abbott.
All right.
And President Pro Tim Alexander seconded.
All right, voting should be open for the minutes. Councilmember Smithman, how would you like to vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott? For the minutes?
Aye.
Okay. Councilmember Alexander?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn?
Yes.
I think that's it.
Okay, all right, uh, the item passes. Um, the management ready, uh, November 5th through February 18th of 2020. Let's see, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, sir.
Mr. President, good morning. Um, good morning to the entire council. Hope everybody is well, and good morning to the public. Just some brief notes, um, let's, let's start with this. Um, I want to congratulate the boys' basketball teams from Huffman High School and Ramsey High School, um, who were present for making it into the state semifinal games, which will be played here in our city at the BJCC this week. Both teams will play on Wednesday, tomorrow, tomorrow. Huffman will play, you follow at 10:30 a.m., and Ramsey will play Center Point at 4:30 p.m., and I want to wish them well, and I know in a minute you'll be doing some more delving into detail on this topic. Um, but they are part of the five, six girls and boys' basketball teams representing, 56 girls and boys' basketball teams, representing from across the state, who will play the semifinals, with the winners moving on to the championship games here at BJCC. Now, having such games in our city would not be possible without many partners. One such partner is the Alabama High School Athletic Association, and the executive director is here, which is Coach Save. Please come on up, bring your team with you as you come up. I want to thank him for his commitment to the Magic City, and I would like to bring him forward now to say a few words, and anybody else that's with him, uh, don't be shy, come on up. They're gonna shoot.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I will need the microphone, I'm loud enough. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Show them how we do this good. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
You know, my coach forgets your daddy, son. When I was in the Enslie, you know, my coach forgets your daddy. It's good, boy. Now, it's good to be home. You know, formerly, I was the coach at Enslie High School in Birmingham.
You really need the mic.
I need the mic.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'll use that. I want to take this opportunity on behalf of the Alabama High School Athletic Association to thank you for having us here today. You know, we started our basketball tournament 1978, 1979, when we held it at the Battle Wool Auditorium. Wasn't, we outgrew the Battle Wool Auditorium and had to move it to Tuscaloosa, and then we came back in 1985 to the Bill Harris Arena. We're very thankful for Coach Harris, who was the athletic director when I was here in, at Enslie in 1985, and we, we were here for a couple of years. But then again, in 1994, we were able to bring our tournament back to Birmingham, where it's been for 27 years at the BJCC, and we're very plowed, proud of the world-class facilities that you've enabled our students to participate in. You know, you have changed so many people's lives, not for shooting a basketball, but you have changed so many students' lives by allowing them to experience Birmingham, Alabama, whether it be a historic educational perspective that they've come from, or as during my first state tournament 14 years ago as executive director, when I came, and during that time, I was walking back from the arena, and there was a young man from Andalusia High School. Coach Richard Robinson was his head coach, and I was walking back with him, and he said to me, "Are we really getting a stay in that big hotel?" And he said to me, "Mr. Savarice, it's the first time I've ever stayed in a hotel." That is the opportunity you have provided to so many students across our state, and don't ever take for granted what you do through the opportunities that you provide. You know, you've also had 19 Birmingham City teams win championships in our tournament, and this year, you have 12 surrounding teams competing, one being Ramsey. I also want you to know the principal of Ramsey High School, Dr. Walker, another one of my former students at Enslie High School. You know, Enslie produced a lot of great folks in this city. Dr. Chuck Willis, another person very high up with the educational system, another former student at Enslie High School. We're very proud that over our tenure here, we've brought almost 1.5 million fans to Birmingham, averaging over 55,000 a year, with our largest game ever played in the history of our tournament was against Parker High School, Coach Cap Brown, playing John Carroll High School, where we had over 18,000 fans. I want to thank you, Mayor Woodfin, for the great team that you provide us, because we couldn't do this without your great team. We're very thankful to Tad Snyder, Bobby Breedlove, David Galber, all the CV folks, Kevin Moore, Ms. Fay Oates, Tanita, Preston, Christie, Rod Parker, another Enslie student. But I, I want to epitomize one man, and I'm gonna say his name is Mr. Henry. He is a parking lot attendant at the Crossplex, and he's the first person everyone sees when they come to Birmingham, Alabama's Crossplex, from all over the state of Alabama, and he greets them with a smile and a good morning, every time. What great customer service, and what we can learn from Mr. Henry. I've been coming here for a long time, and I would, I would be remiss to say the tournament would not be the same without all those boots-on-the-ground folks who truly make the difference, and Mr. Henry epitomizes every one of those. I want to say to all of you, we face challenges every day, but I thank you for taking those challenges and providing us an opportunity for letting us be here. I thank you for allowing us to bring football back in 2021. The common denominator of every event that we hold here is that we make a difference, all of us together, our great team at the AHSAA, Mr. Alvin Briggs, the Associate Executive Director, is here with us today, Mr. Jamie Lee, Assistant Director, our partnership with the Knight E.D. Sports Group. All the common denominator is that we're changing kids' lives through sport. Thank you for what you do, thank you for allowing us to be here. I hope that we celebrate not only the 27th anniversary of this tournament, I hope one day, and I'm looking around this room, some of y'all almost about as old as I am, that we celebrate the 50th, the 100th, and many, many more to come, and we appreciate your great partnership. God bless you for all you do for our students. Thank you.
I want to thank Coach Sav and this entire team for their leadership and investing in our young people, and we hope everything goes smoothly this week. Thank you so much. Mr. President, um, two brief notes, and now get out of your way. One is the City Office of Social Justice and Racial Equity will host an evening with former Mayor Richard Arrington this Thursday, February 27th at 5:30 p.m. at downtown libraries, Arrington Auditorium. Um, we're asking that you all, if your schedule permits, and those in the community, join us for, for Power to the People, um, conversation during which Mayor Arrington will discuss how he strived, um, as mayor for 20 years of our city, to give residents of our city a voice and to speak on other issues. One last note, tonight, I will join Counselor Clinton Woods to host a District 1 Town Hall meeting in the Huffman High School Auditorium. The public will have the chance to meet various department representatives and community partners at 5:30 p.m., and we'll begin the town hall meeting, Mr. President, at 6:00 p.m. That concludes the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we have questions for the mayor, if we could do those a little bit later on, wanted to, to, um, to bring up the presentations, uh, with Ramsey High School, uh, Principal Dr. Walker, if you could come up and bring your team up, and I'm sure you're, the coaches and all.
Good morning, how we doing?
How you doing? You doing okay?
Coach Ditten Johnson and Ramsey High School, and we're, I'm speaking on behalf of Ramsey High School, and Dr. Principal Walker. I see, uh, Coach Savarice and Coach Lee, you know, and I want to echo some of the sentiments they said at our Final Four meeting. Uh, we just want to make sure that our kids take this opportunity and this platform and, and really appreciate it and enjoy the journey. It's a lot of hard work to get here, you know, this is back-to-back years for Ramsey High School. Uh, we're very blessed, starts at the top, we get full support from our, our principal, uh, we get full support from our parents, our community, and we're so blessed to, to have some of you guys' support. I know Cedric Sparks came and spoke to us with our leadership Monday, uh, Mr. Hunter Williams helped us financially, and we're very blessed and thankful for those opportunities. Very thankful for you to have us here this morning, uh, we're honored, um, you know, we're here to win it as well, so, you know, respect the Center Point, but we're, we're here to bring a championship back to Birmingham, the city of Birmingham. Anybody else? The, um, want to make sure the kids understand what, where they're at, and, you know, the, um, the commitment from their families, commitment from our community, our support system at Ramsey, I want them to take it in and, and, and really learn something from this. Hopefully, they'll use it in life as we go through. Like Savarice said, we're here to always benefit the children, and that's what the platform is for, we use it through sports. Um, I'm blessed to be the head coach at, at Ramsey High School, I know some of you may be a graduate of Ramsey, and we hope you can come out, uh, Wednesday and support us. We're gonna blew out the arena, so if you, if you need a blue shirt, come see me. Um, we, we want all of our alumni strong, we're, we're, we're here to, we're here to win. Yes, sir. This gentleman right here, he's five foot two. Mayor Woodfin, thank you, thank you for having us. Now, Keyshawn Murphy is, is a nationally ranked player, he's six foot 10 and a junior, so.
Wow.
And he, and he's our, and he's our fourth-leading scorer, by the way. We have, we have some studs, for sure.
4:30, sir.
Yes, sir. 4:30 Wednesday, uh, Center Point High School, very well-coached team, we're, we look forward to the opportunity, it could be all Birmingham area finals with us in Fairfield.
What time?
Uh, that, that would be Saturday, if we were fortunate to make that, our time for, uh, Wednesday is 4:30 p.m., and it, and it's an opportunity to advance Saturday morning at 10:30 and play the winner of Fairfield and, uh, LaFlore, uh, at the BJCC. If that's the case, we hope to match the, uh, the Parker crowd with the John Carroll, uh, back in the day. It would be a good rival game.
Cool.
Again, thank you for having us, blessed to be here. Dr. Walker?
Dr. Walker, did you want the players to introduce themselves? Or, uh, if that's...
Absolutely, we'll start with Keyshawn.
Do we need to get a microphone? You okay? Okay. Good morning.
Want me to say my name? Uh, I'm, uh, I'm Keyshawn Murphy, and I'm a junior at Ramsey High School.
Hey, good morning, good morning. My name's CJ Barnes, I'm a junior at Ramsey High School.
Brian Urquhart, junior at Ramsey High School.
Cameron Iver, junior at Ramsey High School.
Keyshawn Johnson, senior.
Mike Brown, senior.
Cameron White, uh, sophomore.
Montez Dunson, freshman.
Jalen Jones, freshman.
Karen Tequila, freshman.
David Jackson, junior.
Kewaski Jackson, senior.
Gabriel Allman, senior.
Corey Crosby, senior.
Brandon Nixon, sophomore.
Thanks again for the opportunity to come. I would be remiss if I didn't say, on behalf of our illustrious superintendent, Dr. Lisa Heron, our athletic director, other administrators of the school, and the entire Ramsey nation, thank you for having us on today. We bleed blue.
All right, thank you, uh, Counselor Abbott, Counselor Smithman, you all, yeah, wait, before you all leave.
Yeah, before y'all all get away, uh, I believe very much in the power of positive thinking, so I'm looking forward to buying a championship ring for one of you guys. Uh, I just think that, uh, that you're gonna win. It's very exciting for Ramsey to be in the finals, and I'm just so proud of all of y'all. So, so I'm ready to write that check.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott. We really appreciate it.
Yes, well.
Wait, hold on one minute. Um, I know you guys know me, I'm Naomi's aunt, and I'm so proud of you guys, because I think I've been forced to watch every game after the girls' game. I know Keyshawn, uh, CJ, the other Keyshawn, Mike Brown, you guys are all friends of Naomi, y'all hang out. Um, it's just, you guys don't know how talented these young men are, I mean, and they play so well as a team. You know how rare it is that, that 10 young men can play as one? Like, they have done so well, I'm so proud. As a Ramsey alum, uh, we won when I was there in 2010, I think you guys are gonna win again, but just know you always have a friend in me, anything that you need, I'm here, like, we, we're praying for you, and we know you guys are gonna go to the top. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. I want to, I want to say this, because, like, what your father does for Ramsey High School is, is, is unbelievable, and we're, we're blessed for your family and to be a part of Ramsey, it's awesome, we really thank you.
One other speaker, we're gonna let you get back, you know, you gotta get back to school, boys.
Well, um, we just want to wish you all well, and, uh, I'm gonna do my best to be there Thursday, now Wednesday.
No, Wednesday, tomorrow.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We're there Wednesday, uh, to see you all play, I think it's exciting, uh, that we have Birmingham City Schools that are in, involved in this playoff, and I look forward, um, my college colleague, uh, Maurice Ford, and I went to Miles together, so my daughter went to Ramsey though, so I'm gonna be rooting for Ramsey, okay? All the way. All right? Thank you.
All right. Coach, we want to wish you all, uh, best of luck, and also want to give a shout-out to Huffman High School, uh, they couldn't join us today, but want to give them a shout-out, and they play Wednesday morning, Counselor Woods, is that right?
10:30.
They play Wednesday mor- tomorrow morning, 10:30, uh, I'm not for sure who they're playing, but, uh...
You follow.
You follow, okay, all right. So, we expect both teams to be back next week, two championships.
Steve's done a phenomenal job, and, and Huffman's gonna be a hard team to beat, they should win, absolutely.
Okay, great, all right, we look forward to it, great. Thank you all for coming. All right, thank you. All right, we're just gonna give them one more moment to clear out, we'll move on with, uh, with two more presentations, uh, Counselor Smithman?
Yes, uh, thank you. So, this past weekend, I had a Generational Z and Millennial Voter Train Conference with Urban League, and thank you, Mr. Barnes, I really appreciate, appreciate you and your organization. So, the Young Professionals and I of Urban League were talking about, uh, they had this idea about doing a census crawl. It was something, uh, President Parker, you and I were talking about, about getting on the ground and knocking on doors, and actually telling people about the census, because there are a lot of myths about it, and we really need, you know, our people of color to be educated about it, so I wanted to bring them up and have them to tell you a little bit more about the project.
Good morning. Good morning, counselors, Chief Sparks, and Mayor Woodfin, thank you for allowing us to have this presentation. I am Alexia Patterson, and I am president of the Birmingham Urban League Young Professionals.
I am LaShondia Porter, I'm the vice president of Birmingham Urban League Young Professionals.
The Birmingham Urban League Young Professionals is an auxiliary of the Birmingham Urban League. Uh, it, we serve and support the Urban League's programs and direct services through community service, civic engagement, fundraising, professional development, and economic empowerment. Because the census is so important, national, the National Advocacy Committee has developed Make Black Count, an initiative to educate people of color and other undercounted communities. One of our goals is to partner with a Complete Count Committee, and the Birmingham City Council is a triple C, and, uh, one, the Census Crawl is where we will go to various public housing complexes and give information on the census and why it's so important. The event will take place on March 28th, and there is also information that has been handed to you.
So, thank you, counselors, for giving, uh, my young professionals an opportunity to speak. Uh, so, the National Urban League certainly understands that, uh, communities of color have a very hard time with their counts, um, and so we wanted to make sure that we partner with our beloved city, uh, to ensure that we're standing up and counting those hard communities. Uh, there's a lot of distrust as it relates to, uh, black and brown folks being counted. When you have folks that are knocking on your doors, it's government, we know that that's hard, and so the Urban League certainly saw an opportunity as being a grassroots organization, an organization that is trusted in the community, uh, to be able to help and assist to ensure, uh, individuals in the community that this is certainly a safe project, uh, show the importance of how it impacts their healthcare, uh, show the importance of how if we're not counted, we can lose representation, uh, we know that the city of Birmingham could lose money if we don't have the proper counts, and so we take this very seriously. Uh, we know that, uh, there, there are certainly a lot of odds that are stacked against us in terms of not being counted, and so we want to make sure that we are reaching out to the communities. Thank you, Counselor Smithman, for allowing the opportunity this past weekend, it's been just awesome and great. Hopefully, you'll get a chance to share more with your colleagues as it relates to that, and again, thank you for having us.
That's it, okay. All righty, um, I hate for you to sit down and come back up, so I understand there's another presentation, I think, with Counselor Hillier, so you kind of want to just jump into that real quick, since you're here, so you just...
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. President, um, to the, uh, to the Urban League and the city of Birmingham, we want to call up a, a program that we've been doing in our boxing program that the city of Birmingham and the Urban League has provided for the young kids in the Carver High School area. It has been a superb program that is really taking young kids and focus them in tutoring and some of the things that they've done, so at this time, we're gonna, uh, turn it over to, uh, our Urban League president.
So, thank you, Counselor Hillier, thank you again, uh, to the president, to the council. We, back in 2018, this council helped the Urban League plant a seed for a pilot boxing program. Uh, as the Urban League sees it, it's that it was an opportunity, uh, to open up in an arena, uh, to talk about conflict resolution, uh, to also talk about academic enrichment, uh, and give, as you can see, this is a co-ed diverse group of individuals, uh, we have male and females that are involved in this program. We, uh, had a press announcement, and, and thank you, uh, Counselor O'Quinn, for coming out, uh, had an opportunity to actually tour the Carver facility. So, along with the, the city of Birmingham, we purchased all of the boxing equipment, so heavy bags, speed bags, your, your headgear, your protective wear, uh, your gloves, everything that was needed to create an entire boxing program. The idea of this program is to make sure that this goes citywide. So, it's housed at, at Carver, however, there are students from a diverse group all across the district, so it's not just for Carver students. And so, we are so fortunate that you, uh, you all decided to partner with us. Um, I wanted to give, uh, each of the individuals, uh, uh, an opportunity to speak, but before we do that, we'll at least share their name, I want to tell you what has come out of this, uh, which is extremely exciting, we're becoming a sports city, and so we're proud to announce that we will hold the first Golden Gloves, uh, tournament at Carver on April 4th and 5th. Let me tell you how huge that is, this is an opportunity for our students to have a pathway to the Olympics. This is to be commended for this partnership, we are so excited about this, you'll certainly be getting more information, this is a huge opportunity for the city of Birmingham to continue to grow.
I think we have a video that we want to show.
Okay, absolutely.
And then we can continue it after.
Okay.
We want to call that video up? We talk about our children having role models and mentors, well, in this boxing program, you've had some awesome role models, some awesome trainers, and we want to thank them for their skill set and what they've had to help the young men and the young ladies do.
In October, the city of Birmingham partnered with the Birmingham Urban League, city school system, and Round One Boxing to turn students into champions.
I was always getting in trouble, won the fight, I actually did fight, and my principal, she had told me about the program.
In its pilot program, the Magic City Boxing Club has taught these 11 students focus, discipline, and a healthy way to channel their emotions, while making them more confident, stronger, and healthier.
This is not necessarily just for, you know, kids that have problems, this, right now, we're talking about making this city wide.
It can help other people out in getting disciplined and what they can channel their anger toward...
And in April, the 2020 Southeastern Golden Gloves Regional Tournament of Champions is coming to Carver, it's a pathway to the Olympics.
Yeah, we gotta hurt them, that's right.
So, making this program available to more students is exactly what they hope to do.
So, I want my other colleagues...
I am LaShondiya Porter, I'm the vice president of Birmingham Urban League Young Professionals.
The Birmingham Urban League Young Professionals is an auxiliary of the Birmingham Urban League. Uh, it, we serve and support the Urban League's programs and direct services through community service, civic engagement, fundraising, professional development, and economic empowerment. Because the census is so important, national, the National Advocacy Committee has developed Make Black Count, an initiative to educate people of color and other undercounted communities. One of our goals is to partner with a Complete Count Committee, and the Birmingham City Council is a triple C. And, uh, one, the Census Crawl is where we will go to various public housing complexes and give information on the census and why it's so important. The event will take place on March twenty eighth, and there is also information that has been handed to you.
So, thank you, councilors, for giving, uh, my young professionals an opportunity to speak. Uh, so the National Urban League certainly understands that, uh, communities of color, uh, have a very hard time with their counts. Um, and so we wanted to make sure that we partner with our beloved city, uh, to ensure that we're standing up and counting those hard communities. Uh, there's a lot of distrust as it relates to, uh, black and brown folks being counted. When you have folks that are knocking on your doors, it's government, we know that that's hard. And so the Urban League certainly saw an opportunity as being a grassroots organization, an organization that is trusted in the community, uh, to be able to help and assist to ensure, uh, individuals in the community that this is certainly a safe project, uh, show the importance of how it impacts their healthcare, uh, show the importance of how if we're not counted, we can lose representation. Uh, we know that the city of Birmingham could lose money if we don't have the proper counts, and so we take this very seriously. Uh, we know that, uh, there, there are certainly a lot of odds that are stacked against us in terms of not being counted. And so we wanna make sure that we are reaching out to the communities, thank you, Council Smithman, for allowing the opportunity this past weekend, it's been just awesome and great, hopefully you'll get a chance to share more with your colleagues as it relates to that, and again, thank you for having us.
That's it, okay, alrighty, um, I hate for you to sit down and come back up, so I understand there's another presentation, I think, with Council Hillier, so you kinda wanna just jump into that real quick since you're here, so you just...
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. President, um, to the, uh, to the Urban League and the city of Birmingham. We wanna call up a, a program that we've been doing in our boxing program that the city of Birmingham and the Urban League has provided for the young kids in the Carver High School area. It has been a superb program that is really taking young kids and focus them in tutoring and some of the things that they've done. So at this time, we're gonna, uh, turn it over to, uh, our Urban League president.
So, thank you, Council Hillier, thank you again, uh, to the president, to the council. We, back in twenty eighteen, this council helped the Urban League plant a seed for a pilot boxing program. Uh, as the Urban League sees it, it's that it was an opportunity, uh, to open up in an arena, uh, to talk about conflict resolution, uh, to also talk about academic enrichment, uh, and give, as you can see, this is a co-ed diverse group of individuals. Uh, we have males and females that are involved in this program. Uh, we, uh, had a press announcement, and, and thank you, uh, Council Quinn for coming out, uh, had an opportunity to actually tour the Carver facility. So, along with the, the city of Birmingham, we purchased all of the boxing equipment, so heavy bags, speed bags, your, your headgear, your protective wear, uh, your gloves, everything that was needed to create an entire boxing program. The idea of this program is to make sure that this goes citywide. So it's housed at, at Carver, however, there are students from a diverse group all across the district. So it's not just for Carver students. And so we are so fortunate that you, uh, you all decided to partner with us. Um, I wanted to give, uh, each of the individuals, uh, uh, an opportunity to speak, but before we do that, we'll at least share their name, I wanted to tell you what has come out of this, uh, which is extremely exciting, we're becoming a sports city. And so we're proud to announce that we will hold the first Golden Gloves, uh, tournament at Carver on April fourth and fifth. Let me tell you how huge that is, this is an opportunity for our students to have a pathway to the Olympics. This is to be commended for this partnership, we are so excited about this, you'll certainly be getting more information. This is a huge opportunity for the city of Birmingham to continue to grow.
I think we have a video that we wanna show.
Okay, absolutely.
And then we can continue it after.
Okay.
You wanna call that video up? We talk about our children having role models and mentors, well, in this boxing program, you've had some awesome role models, some awesome trainers, and we wanna thank them for their skill set and what they've had to help the young men and the young ladies do.
In October, the city of Birmingham partnered with the Birmingham Urban League City School System and Round One Boxing to turn students into champions.
I was always getting in trouble, won the fight, I actually did fight, and my principal, she had told me about the program.
In its pilot program, the Magic City Boxing Club has taught these eleven students focus, discipline, and a healthy way to channel their emotions, while making them more confident, stronger, and healthier.
This is not necessarily just for, you know, kids that have problems, this, right now, we're talking about making this city wide.
It can help other people out in getting disciplined and what they can channel their anger towards.
And in April, the twenty twenty Southeastern Golden Gloves Regional Tournament of Champions is coming to Carver. It's a pathway to the Olympics. So, making this program available to more students is exactly what they hope to do.
So I want my other colleagues to hear this now, look at what is being done, look at this skill set. We need to keep this program going.
Absolutely.
And we need to make it citywide. So we are, uh, just putting out that plea, and, uh, to my other colleagues, thanks for everything you've done, but we need more help to keep it moving, and the Golden Gloves are coming, so watch out! Wow, I wanna thank you for that video, that was awesome, you see these young people have talent, and, um, and, and I say to the young ladies, hey, man, watch out, no more pushing around or taking advantage, you might get more than you bargained for.
So, just really quickly, let me wrap up, so again, this is, this is a sport, it's an individual sport, but it's so much more. Uh, these students have to participate in academic enrichment because we're really focused on their academics. Uh, in addition to that, we know that conflict resolution has been an important part of the city's, uh, vision and, and moving forward, so we wanted to be sure we talk about that. Let me tell you just how impactful the program has been and who we have involved. So unfortunately, Dave Godbar is not, uh, here, he's actually overseas, uh, training one of the champions, but he is the former trainer for Deontay Wilder. And so I think, uh, as a matter of fact, if we can give the champ a hand, I don't know if those that saw the fight, we need to stand up and make sure that we support that young man for what he's doing. And so listen, this is a world-class program, Dave has been awesome as part of what he does. Uh, let me just, uh, again, share with the team, uh, let's, uh, if we can, have each one of them to introduce themselves, and then I, uh, recognize my team, and then we'll get out of the way.
And the coaches, yes, please let them.
My name's Chloe Kegler, and I go to George Washington Carver.
My name is Brandon Thompson, and I go to WJ Christian.
My name is Kiana Eze, and I go to George Washington Carver, and I'm a sophomore.
My name's Kiana Toney, and I go to Washington.
My name is Zakai Bur, and I go to Wilkes-Allen Middle School.
My name is Cameron Danbury, and I go, I'm home schooled for K-12.
So let me bring the coaches up, uh, Greg, Carlos. So these are the coaches that, uh, work with these students three days a week, uh, he's a former boxer himself, and, uh, actually, how many fights did you, what's your, what's your record?
About twenty-five fights, had, uh, almost, uh, twenty and twenty-five losses. But anyway, um, our mission is to commit, you know, it's just to connect with the miss, with the body, the mind, and the soul of the kids. And we believe that every child deserves a fighting chance, and as a community of ministry is fighting for that same cause, we can all make this a possibility for anyone seeking a healthy and productive life, and that's, thank you for that.
Coach Carlos, would you like to say a word?
Coach Carlos Anderson, uh, I was brought on this project by Councilman Hillier, I'm the strength and conditioning coach for these kids, uh. I've enjoyed working with each and every one of these kids, uh, little to none experience, and boxing is a discipline in itself, uh, it's not easy, you're banging on something every day, you're banging on something every day, and it's gonna affect your attitude, and these kids took on the challenge, and I mean, they executed very well at a high level, and I'm so proud of all these kids that stand up here today. Uh, just look forward to going forward with these, so, thank you, uh, appreciate y'all's time.
Yes, let, let me say this to the coaches, I, I know your son is fighting in New York soon, i- is that not the case? The seventeenth in New York, so we have talent and skill, I, I, I wanna thank the, the council for indulging, and I know it's a little long, but I've just been told, we do have another video, short video, yes, I, I, so I wanna, I wanna play it, featuring, uh, uh, Brandon. Let's play that video, please.
Life is filled with obstacles, pain, and disappointment. But these things create one of two things, character or excuses. I don't run away from a challenge because I am afraid. Instead, I run towards it because the only way to escape fear is to trample it beneath my feet. Because every champion was once a contender. Refused to give up.
Wow, wow, I wanna thank you, uh, Brandon, I think that's Brandon right there. I wanna say, hey, that's what it's all about, and if you heard the voiceover, that was my chief of staff, Tevin Jones, who, uh, is an excellent boxer, and that's the way he, he worked out his frustrations growing up and learned to focus, and he's a very focused young man. I wanna say to this group and to this council, you've done a lot, you've really helped a lot, to the mayor's office, to the mayor of the city of Birmingham, thank you for coming out, you've done a lot. These are, this is a result of what your work has done to help young people focus, this is what it's all about. There was also a tutoring program that went along with this, so the kids not only got a chance to focus, but they received tutoring. Thank you so much, Mr. President, I'm sorry we were so long, but it's for the young people, we love you, you're special, you can achieve anything you want to achieve, and continue to push ahead, and will be here to have your back. Love you, thank you so much, Carver High School.
Thank you, Council Hillier, thank you all for coming, we gotta move on.
Alright, thank you.
We gotta move on, thanks. Alright, Council Woods, Council Williams, you all have a presentation for, uh, WJ Christian. Thank you, Mr. President, real quick, we wanna take some time to celebrate the WJ Christian girls' basketball team, and, uh, as they come up, they, uh, won the city championship, they were twenty and oh, seventeen and oh in conference play, so... Uh, myself and Council Williams, this is, uh, special for me, I was a, went to WJ Christian and actually won a championship in football in two thousand, and so, uh, when I was there, I told Principal Lumsy I didn't see the trophy anymore, so they, they, they've been winning a lot, so they had to make some room, but we wanna, we wanna celebrate the girls, so as you, uh, hear your name, just wave your hand and step up, Ms. Deja Allen. Ms. Marion Franklin. Ms. Mahogany Gilchrist. Ms. Grace Johnson. A B honor roll in perfect attendance, uh, Ms. Sienna McKee. Alana Noble. Elena, Elena Noble, yeah, make them get it right, A B honor roll. Ayana Sims. Ayana? Ayana Sims. A B honor roll as well, alright. Kiloia Thomas? Kaylee Loa Thomas, A B honor roll student. Lord, she's, uh, I, Tisha? Otisha? I'm gonna let y'all, should've let y'all say y'all, oh. Otisha Towns, A B honor roll student. And Na-, uh, Nala Wesley. Nayla Wesley. Coach Marcus Thomas, come on up and say something, and let me...
How everybody doing today? Well, as you can see, I have to give everybody nicknames on the team, this, you know, everybody, everybody. Well, first, I wanna thank God for the blessings and all the opportunity that he provided for me, and not only that, the girls. You know, it's a blessing just to be at one of the best schools in Birmingham, and Mr. Lumsy, my principal, provide the girls with everything they need to. I wanna appreciate the girls just for giving me a chance, you know, I appreciate them just for listening to me and understanding, hey. And life, you know, is deeper than basketball, you know, every day you can be a champion just by waking up, striving to do something better tomorrow than you done today, and not, and last but not least, I appreciate my parents for all the positive energy and support from the beginning to the end of the season, and that's about it, thank you.
Thank you. Principal Lumsy, just say hello to us.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mayor, President Parker, all the, uh, council members, um, Councilman Woods, Councilman Williams, alumnus, Councilman, uh, Smithman, thank you for having our girls here this morning. Not only is it special for them to win a championship, but it's special for them to win a championship and be, be undefeated throughout the season. Many of these girls are six gr-, uh, seven grade girls, and they were undefeated as sixth graders as well. Uh, so, we talk about continuing excellence at WJ Christian, and this is an example. And, not only that, they're champions in the classroom, and so I'm just so very proud of our student athletes, our scholar athletes that's behind me, and Coach Thomas, for the hard work that they put in, day in, day out, giving up their weekends, and, um, the hard work they put in to accomplish the championship that they did. And these students are very deserving, and also wanna thank the parents, um, who supported our coach and the team throughout the season as well, on their success. So again, to everyone, thank you all for having us, and our girls are very deserving. And we also, you saw another product, Brendan, in a previous presentation, so we have a lot of great things going on at WJ Christian as we work to continue excellence, thank you.
Hey, Principal Lumsy, that's my friend, so y'all, I'm so proud of you guys, I actually played on the team when I was at WJ Christian, and my sister, my sister was a coach, and she won, I think, two championships, and, you know, I have to commend you all because that's not easy at all to keep your school work, to win a championship, even, to even just be social, so... Um, I'm really proud of you guys, just as alum, anything you need, just let me know, it doesn't matter if you're in Council Williams or Woods District. Um, I just wanna say, I'm really, I'm proud of you too, Coach, because I know you're new, and that's hard to come in and win championships, I wanna commend you for that, thank you, President Parker.
Okay, is that everybody, okay, thank you all for coming. Council Hoyt, you have one last presentation, I think that'll wrap it all up.
Yes, well, thank you, Mr. President, thank you all for... And I think my daughter was on both of those championship teams, um, when, uh, WJ Christian won. Uh, we have a video from our, um, program we had last week with the AG Gaston Boys Clubs, Boys and Girls Club.
Today is, um, uh, is really a day of jubilation because, uh, we get to open up a center for our young people, uh, the Walter Hollitt Junior, uh, Clubhouse, uh, it is the AG Gaston Boys and Girls Club. And so, uh, it's exciting, in all societies, um, you know, good citizenship has to be perpetuated, and I think it lends itself, uh, with the quality of staff that we have, and the leadership of Frank Adams, uh, certainly, uh, speaks to that.
The AG Gaston Boys and Girls Club is very, very excited to partner with the city of Birmingham to bring the Walter Hollitt Junior Clubhouse to life. This is a wonderful opportunity for the communities we have served since nineteen sixty-seven, we're able to do more than we've ever been able to do before in impacting the young lives that we've been charged with mentoring, and challenging, and encouraging along the way.
Don't have to go far, they can be right here, uh, in the heart of the neighborhood, and being, uh, who they need to be, because they are gonna be, they are the future, and, uh, there's no telling where they're gonna end up.
Being here at the Crossplex in partnership with the Birmingham City Council, uh, through our great friends with the City Council and others who made this dream come true, we're excited about what we can do for our young people in the city of Birmingham.
I feel good because it's in District Eight, uh, everything is great in District Eight.
For more good news about Birmingham's communities, follow the Birmingham City Council on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram.
Mr. President, I wanna thank my colleagues for coming out, um, Dr. Quinn, uh, Council Smithman, and Council Woods, uh, for being in attendance, it was really a wonderful day, uh, not only for District Eight, but for the city of Birmingham, our young people have a safe haven, and certainly could not, uh, experience this without, uh, the very intentional leadership, uh, Mr. Frank Adams, he is really, has done an excellent job, and, uh, not only leading them, but raising the money, and I just wanna, um, also give a personal note, um, that Philip and Heather, uh, McWayne, who gave a million dollars towards this, uh, uh, this endeavor, they are to be commended for that, and they are our own, and so, um, I think all of us know about the McWayne, uh, industry and what have you, but they gave a million dollars of their own money, uh, to help build this, uh, AG Gaston, uh, Boys Club, and, and a shout out to Dr. Connelisa Rice, and, uh, Stento, I think, uh, Lee, uh, who, um, Stire, who, um, also led this campaign, uh, to raise seven point two million dollars to build this facility, and certainly wanna thank my colleagues, uh, because we couldn't have done it without the help of the colleagues, um, making allowances for that. Certainly to this mayor, uh, we appreciate, um, uh, the leadership that he's gave in this effort as well. So, we, we have to thank ourselves, quite frankly, uh, but to also to thank the parents who entrust, um, AG Gaston Boys and Girls Club, um, with their children each and every day. And so Frank and his staff has done a Yoma's job, and certainly, uh, John Hudson, uh, who, um, really, uh, came up with the idea that we needed to do this club and move this club, and so say kudos to John, even though he's in Atlanta now, living and thriving, uh, but he did, um, uh, initiate this, and so we're very grateful that we have the new Walter Hollitt Junior, um, Clubhouse, and so, uh, kudos to all those persons who had a part in that, thank you.
Council Hoyt, uh, I just wanted to ask you, um, how much is the annual membership fee for the AG Gaston Girls and Boys Club?
I think it's minimum, but I'm not sure exactly, how much is it?
It's, it's eight dollars.
Eight dollars, my goodness.
Eight, eight dollars annually in District Eight.
Wow, eight dollars.
I think that's incredible.
I like that, I like that, I'm gonna be using that.
Yeah, there you go.
Eight dollars, wow.
I'll give you that one free.
Okay, alright, I appreciate that, absolutely, but thank you all for being there.
Alright, great, alright, so we've gotten everybody's presentations, we're ready to get down to a little work right now? Yes, ma'am.
Um, I can't let AG Gaston go by, I was so sad that I couldn't be there because I just love that organization. Their old building, you know, was definitely long in the tooth, but this new one is wonderful. There's only one thing missing, and that's a swimming pool. And so I think that Mayor Woodfin and the council should partner with AG Gaston to build a pool so that we could share it as the warm-up cooldown pool for the Crossplex, and then they could use it the rest of the time, because who wants an empty pool? So, Mr. Mayor, we, we have a challenge ahead of us.
So, uh, can we, can we discuss that, I, I don't mean to intervene, but can we discuss that at our committee to hold next week?
Oh, I think we should.
Okay, is that okay if we make that a part of the conversation?
I think we should.
Okay, alright, so we're gonna put that under park projects where we're gonna get the update on the citywide pools, we'll ask, we'll put another notation about Crossplex Pool, and so we can just, that'll give us a couple of days to kind of work through cost, that kind of thing, and, and kind of where we'd be able to sit and all that kind of stuff.
The District Eight Pool Partnership.
I got it, so there's gonna be District Eight Pool Project, okay.
Awesome.
Alright, we're gonna put that on committee to hold for next week for a discussion item, if everybody's, everybody's good with that? Council Hoyt, you good with that?
Oh, indubitable.
Yes, sir, okay, we won't get that confused with the other pool, we won't get that confused with the other pool, so we're gonna put Crossplex in parentheses. Alright, cool, alright, great, thank you, Council Abbott, I think, uh, that's some of the things we can, we can work towards, and perhaps the, uh, surcharge dollars could, you know, for infrastructure could be probably a funding source of that, so I think we can work through that. Um, let's move over to the, uh, agenda, um, real quick, the, uh, consent, consent agenda. Miss Clark, if you could work through that.
Consent agenda starts on page two with items one, two, three, four, and five. Page three. Page three, we have items six, seven, nine, and 10. Councilor Quinn.
Yes. Excuse me. So item, uh, no, is it number eight?
Yes.
Yes. Item number eight is being withdrawn. The, um, King Cab has, has provided their, uh, certificate of liability insurance.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Page four, we have items 11, 12, and 13 on consent. Page five, we have items 14 and 15 on consent. Page eight, item number 26 is on consent. Okay, well, there's some changes on some other items, but we'll get to them as we pull them up on the agenda. Skip over to page 10, we have item number 32 on consent. Page 11, we have items 37, 38, 39, and 40 on consent. Please note that item number 37 was, um, recommended by Budget and Finance. That's item 37. Page 12, we have items 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, and 46 on consent. Page 13, items 47, 49, 50, 51, and 52 are on consent. Item number 48 should be withdrawn. That's item 48. Page 14, items 53, 54, 55, and 56 are on consent. Page 15, items 57, 58, and item number 60 is on consent. Page 16, we have items 61, 62, 63, and 64 on consent. Page 17, item number 66 is on consent. And you have one addendum item that's not on consent, but it's item number 68. It doesn't addendum. Should have been passed out earlier before the meeting started.
(inaudible). Yes, sir. Thank you, President Parker. Um, I have several items I want to suggest for consent agenda. On, starting on page number eight, number 27 and 28.
I object to 27.
Okay. Uh, on...
That's still with their own district funds.
That's, I don't, that's fine.
On page nine, items 29, 30, and 31.
Counselor, one, on item 29, there's some actual language change within the resolution.
Yes, um, yes, so there's, uh, amended, some amended language that we have.
Yeah, and I object to that. I mean, I object to pulling it off, yeah.
Putting it on?
I mean, putting it on, I'm sorry.
For item 29?
Yes.
Okay. Um, okay, and then on page 10, items 34 and 35. And on page 11, item number 36.
So we're okay with 30 and 31, do we?
That's correct.
Okay. So 34 and 35 are added to that.
So just for clarification, 34 and 35, what was your...
Yes, I was recommending those for the consent agenda.
Thank you. Any other items? Counselor Smithelman?
I would like to put items 22 and 23 on consent.
Any other items? Council Abbott?
Yes, I would like to place item 16, 17, 18, and 19 on consent.
That's 16.
That's on page five.
Yes, and 17, 18, and 19?
Yeah, those are on page six.
Okay, so number 16 is not on consent, but we're asking you to put 17, 18, and 19 on page six.
And did we put item 59 on consent? I would like to add 59 to consent.
Item number 59?
Yeah, it's on page 15.
On page 15?
And I was going to ask if we could read back through which ones we placed on consent so that...
Sure.
All of us will know.
Okay. And are there any others that you'd like to have consented? I would like to ask the items number one and two are pulled from consent, please. Yes. Okay, does everyone have a chance for those items? Now, Mr. Clerk, would you read the consent, those items that were, um, added or removed?
Okay. Page two, we removed items one and two from consent. Page three, we have items, I'm sorry, items three, four, and five are, uh, still on consent. Page three, we have items six, seven, and nine and 10 on consent. Item eight is withdrawn. Page four, items 11 through 13 are on consent. Page five, items 14 and 15 are on consent. Page six, items 17 through 19 were added to the consent agenda. That's 17 through 19. Uh, just make sure I have it here. 17, 18, 19, okay. Page seven, items 22 and 23 were added to the consent agenda. Page eight, item 26 is on consent and item 28 was added to the consent agenda. That's item 28 added to consent. Um, give me one second, I'm trying to find it. Item 28 added. All right. On page nine, we have items 30 and 31 added to the consent agenda. Page 10, item 32 is on consent and items 34 and 35 were added to the consent agenda. Page 11, items 37 through 40 are on consent. Page 12, items 41 through 46 are on consent. Page 40, I'm sorry, page 13, item 47 is on consent and items 49 through 52 are on consent. Item 48 is withdrawn. Page 14, items 53 through 56 are on consent. Page 15, items 57 through 60 are on consent. Item 59 was added to the consent agenda. Page 16, items 61 through 64 are on consent. Page 17, item number 66 closes out the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Yes, Mr. Quinn?
Yes. Uh, so, I think we skipped over page 30, uh, number 36 on page 11 to add that to the consent agenda. And, um, I'd also like to recommend that we add the addendum item number 68.
Okay, so item number 36 added to consent. And what was the other item? Our addendum item is number...
68. The grease trap free, uh, fee for the...
Item 68.
Department of Health.
68.
Does everyone have it, number 68? Thank you. All right. And so we're adding number 68 to consent. Having no other items, are we okay, Mr. Clerk? I can read my statement?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so requests. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation, which is indicated in parenthesis with a P, will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number on. All public hearings will be announced.
Motion to move the consent agenda is amended.
Second. It's been moved by Counselor Williams, seconded by Counselor Smithelman. We're ready for that vote.
All right. Voting should be open. Council members, O'Quinn and Williams?
Yes.
Yes.
That vote should be up, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. That motion passes, so all of our consent items are approved. Thank you. Now, if you'll read our first item.
All right, item one. A resolution relative to the Application Affairs Incorporated for the transfer of an off-premise beer and wine license to be used at Save Mart, 4,000 Jefferson Avenue Southwest, Suite A, Birmingham, in hearing of all street parties.
And, sorry, is it okay to read one and two together?
Yes, sir.
Okay, one second. Item number two, a resolution relative to the Application Affairs Incorporated for the transfer of a lounge retail liquor Class II license to be used at Save Mart Package Store, 4,000 Jefferson Avenue Southwest, Suite B, Birmingham, in hearing of all street parties. Move the items.
Second.
Can I also read that?
Thank you, Mr. President. All right. This is going to be a, uh, public hearing for both items one and two. Do we have anybody from the administration that would like to present them? If not, I'm happy to read them. All right. Uh...
Did he read the item?
Yes, he did.
Okay. So both items have been read. So what we're gonna do is we're going to let the, uh, folks from Save Mart come up and present, uh, the, both items one and two. And then if there's anybody that wants to speak for or against, uh, if y'all will come forward and then we will hear your remarks. Sir? If you'll state your name and address for the record as well.
Good morning. My name is John Aaron, uh, 123 First Street South.
Sir, can you talk into the microphone?
385-007. Uh, we're here, uh, this is a transfer of a off-premise beer and wine license and off, uh, liquor store license. Uh, this is not a new license. All they're doing is they purchased the store and it's being transferred. And so we're coming, uh, forward to ask for the transfers so that we can go to the ABC Board and continue the process.
All right. Thank you for being here. Seeing no members of the public that wish to speak on this, are there any council members that wish to speak?
May I speak, Mr. President? Yes, thank you very much. The reason that I asked that these two items be pulled, I was present when you presented at the Riley Trevallik Neighborhood Meeting. And I do know this is just simply a transfer of that license. But I did want to just make everyone aware that the neighborhood did have, um, some concerns about, not particularly within what occurs within your store, but what happens surrounding and some of the things that they think helps to promote some things that occur within the vicinity of the store. Now, I do want to state that you all did say that you will work with the community. I want to hold you to that because we have five schools and we have a lot of neighborhoods in that community where we'd like to get some support. But the neighborhood was just vehemently opposed to the, and, and very vocal about their proposal to this. And I just wanted to be sure that was noted. So thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Question, um, so with the plan, has the, have, have you all received the plan on how they're gonna do things better, Mr. Chairman? Or is that something that you're working through your committee?
No, they're, they're, the ABC laws don't require them to submit any kind of community involvement plan.
Okay.
Nor does our state, I mean, nor does our city code.
Okay.
The vote from the neighborhood, is that in the public record, just when it was submitted for the transfer?
Yes, during, during public safety, I don't remember, obviously, the number of attendants, but, um, during public safety, it was, uh, publicly announced the vote that the neighborhood did not approve the transfer of these two licenses, uh, which is, which actually, it should have not been a consent item, um, but it, which is why these gentlemen are here.
One second.
Mr. President, my name is up too.
Okay, I can't. Go ahead, I can't see it, but go ahead.
Well, generally speaking, transfers are just transfers. But I would like to hear what your plan for security is at this store, knowing that it's a problem. What do you, what, what do you plan to do to make improvements?
The, the issue is not necessarily the security at the store. It's around the store is what was expressed at that meeting. So what they're working is, is to encourage the police officers when they're on their beat to come into the store, making sure that they're aware of who they are and that they're aware of any kind of issues that are, that the police know about in the community because they're gonna know before anybody. And so that's what they've been working to do is to, is to make that connection, um, have more of a presence. Because if you have a police presence, people that are gonna do something bad are probably not gonna hang around that area. And so that's what they've been working on. And like I said, they've only had the store for, I think, three months. So they're, they're, they're working, you know, lighting and everything and, and so that's, that's what they're doing to kind of, because it's not in their, their ability to govern somebody else's property, they're making sure that theirs is taken care of, but also trying to attract, uh, enough people that, that would, would encourage people not to gather around on the buildings that are around the, uh, the property.
Okay, so you have sufficient lighting and you have cameras and you have all that on your own property?
Yes.
It's the surrounding properties where the problems are occurring?
That's what we're hearing from the community, yes. And that's what we're working. So the cameras actually go out into the street, you know, it covers more than just, you know, the, the property. But, uh, but yes, it's, that, that was the issue that when we went to the meeting that, that she was referencing.
Okay, thank you.
Turn it back a few.
Okay. I don't know, Council Horton or then Dr. Quinn. Yes, sir.
Just from a technical standpoint, if, um, if we could just have the, the neighborhood, the result of the meetings, what have you, here in council, so when we ask the question, we could have that on hand. I, I know, um, people do different things differently, but I think that helps us understand, um, you know, the intent of the meeting itself. And so, um, that, you know, be helpful. That's all, just a technical issue. But I, well, but I would say this, um, you know, these store owners, operators, they can set a, a, um, a standard for their patrons. You know, there are some places, you know, when you go in, um, or you go to patronize them, there's certain thing they're not gonna put up with. And you all set that tenor, okay?
Yes.
You all do that. And so, um, just security cameras and what ha, that ain't, that's not gonna work. You had to set a, a standard for your business because at the end of the day, it's where we live and y'all go home. And we got to deal with all this other junk and mess around us and what have you. But if you're not setting a standard, if you just don't tolerate folks loitering and, and, and panhandling and all this other stuff that goes on, you have to establish that. A camera won't do that for us.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Quinn.
Yes, so in that same vein, uh, we've had, you know, I've dealt with some of these, uh, issues in businesses throughout my district. And one of the things that we've discovered is that, um, you actually have to post some signage to actually trespass into individuals. Um, so, you know, if they are loitering, you have the legal authority to trespass those individuals. So if, you know, just as a suggestion, if you don't have that sort of signage or public notice posted already, I would suggest that as, as an additional tool that you can use, uh, to give law enforcement officials the capacity to remove those individuals from your property.
Yes.
Council Williams, you have anything?
Yeah, I want to move, uh, because I, we're waiting on the information, um, but I would encourage perhaps go back and visit with the neighborhood and come back with a more plan where the neighborhood is in support or can work along with what your plan is, a timeline and those kind of things. So I know we're waiting on the, uh, report from the neighborhood, but, uh, the proper time, I'm gonna move to definitely postpone this item or these two items. If, if there's... If, if, there's a- All right, we have a motion on the floor. So we're ready to vote on the move to indefinitely postpone items one and two. So if anyone wants to speak to it up here?
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
One other thing, on a transfer, we can't hold the new owner responsible for what the old owner did. I mean, that's what we've been told in the past, I'm assuming that's still true. And so I do think it's a good idea for the new owners to do some repair work with the neighborhood since the previous owners obviously caused a problem, because I've seen big turnarounds when a new owner comes in, and then I've seen the opposite happen. So, I think it's important to develop a good relationship with the community because they've obviously been burned and they, they're not happy about you being there. It would be good to do that little bit of repair work, but I know that we can't turn down a liquor license that's just a transfer.
Okay, so let me amend that to, if I can amend it to four weeks, because it gives the time to go back to the neighborhood and just meet with them to just talk through what the plans are. I've got a motion on the floor, so I'm going to amend my motion to indefinitely postpone. Let's do a six-week delay on this item.
Carry that motion, can I speak, sir?
Yes, sir, you can speak. Yes, sir.
Well, and, and I want to respect what my colleague has suggested in terms of how we treat different owners, but, but I have to beg to differ, because if, if new owners didn't have to abide by the same values that the previous owner would, would employ, then, then they wouldn't need to come here at all, quite frankly. We can just transfer a license, you go and about your business, but they do have to come here. And so that's the process. And so we need to be just as diligent with new owners as we've done with previous owners. I just think there's a correlation there, that we need to employ to, to say to people, when you come in these communities and you set up shop, we have an expectation too, how you're going to do business. It's as simple as that. And we need to do that, because when you go to Hoover, they, they own that, own that program. And so, but now they're not going to go over there. And matter of fact, some places you can't even have a drive-through.
Okay.
You know, let alone anything else.
All right, so where we are, a motion to delay this item for six weeks. Real quick, if you could read out the report, and we're going to vote real quick, can we?
Sure, Mr. President.
Okay.
The applicant attended the Neighborhood Association on the fourteenth of January. Eighteen were in attendance, five opposed, one supported, twelve abstained from voting. The reason for opposition from the neighborhood is, quote, "No alcohol in neighborhood," end quote.
All right, so we got a motion here for a six-week delay.
Second.
All right, Parker Hoyt, if we could-
Have we finished our public hearing? I think there was another speaker.
There was another speaker, okay.
Thank you, President.
Yes, sir.
My name's Jamil Summerford, from Connecting Police and Citizens Coalition. I stand in here in humility, but I also have a opposing perspective. I live in southwest Birmingham, so I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I don't believe in alcohol in our neighborhoods because we have a lot of poverty in our neighborhood. We have a lot of depression in our neighborhoods, and we understand that this is what, where people go when they, they go to the alcohol, they look for that escape. So, it's just not, I mean, even though it's a transfer, it's a transfer for, to make it easier for those who are in depression versus creating educational programs in our neighborhood that would teach our youth about gun control and teach them about things of that nature. Because soon as, it's, it's our youth that are getting connected to the alcohol. It starts there, and then when you control that neighborhood with the police, then it just moves the crime out, you see, into other places. So, I'm just one of those citizens and advocates in the community that oppose alcohol in my southwest Birmingham neighborhood altogether, and I just pray that we can just create systems and programs that are conducive to what we're dealing with, and that's poverty and depression and oppression, and I thank y'all for this opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Is that all the public speakers? With that, I'm just trying to make sure all the public speakers. So with that, we're going to allow you to speak for a minute, and then we're going to, I have to amend my motion again, I've been told that there's a certain timeline, so I'm going to amend it to two weeks, not six weeks. That's what we've been indicated.
I withdraw my second, and now?
Yeah, move on this, hold on, for two-week delay. That'll be the motion before us. We'll allow you an opportunity to speak, and then we'll take a vote, and we're going to then move on.
Real clear, like I said, this, this is a transfer, he's not been in the store that long, he has been making changes, and he wants to work with the community. You can see from the vote that it was not, the vote was five opposed, one for, and then twelve abstained. So, I, I would just ask, I understand that you're going to have the delay, but we will go back to the community, but I understand that it was not, you know, this, this overall opposition, there was a number of people there.
I was at that meeting, Mr. Chair.
Yes, well, your fashion, I want to recognize.
I was in attendance at that meeting, and I know what the vote, but there was, and they've, you've been to them before, and they didn't vote before. Do you remember in December? You had-
They told us that it was not an official meeting.
Said it was not an official meeting. And so I do know that the neighborhood is very concerned about what was happening at the store before, and to speak to the citizens' concern of what happens in and around that store that relates to other activity that goes on around the store. And what the neighborhood was asking, your role in this is to help to try to minimize of some of what happens after people leave that package store and walk across that street into the other area, and it becomes a nuisance with loitering and other things. So that's what the neighborhood is asking. They do meet this evening, and their regular meeting is on March tenth. So if we could, I think it would be important if they could get back to the neighborhood. They do meet this evening, as well as their regular meeting is scheduled for March tenth.
Okay, all right, we have a motion for a two-week delay. Mr. Clerk, ready to vote? All right, this is on a two-week delay.
It ain't going to change me, but I'm going to let you go ahead and change it.
All right, is that everybody voted? Okay, that item passed nine zero, that's two-week delay. Thank you, items one and two. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Council, for this brief moment in the middle of your, your public meeting, to give you all a very important update that you all have been supporting since day one. At this time, I want to bring up Superintendent Dr. Lisa Herring, as well as Sherry Cook, Leroy Abrams, and Tony Smoke, as well as Drew Langlow of United Way. We believe today is a, a banner day in education for the Birmingham community, most importantly for our young people and students. And so along with Superintendent Dr. Lisa Herring, we are happy to announce that three foundations are committing a total of three million dollars today to the Birmingham Promise. That is the Alabama Power Foundation, that is Outtech Foundation, and that is Regions. Each will be contributing one million dollars, and I think that deserves a round of applause. I'd like to take this time, Mr. President, very briefly, to recognize Tony Smoke of Alabama Power, Leroy Abrams of Regions Bank, as well as Sherry Cook of Outtech, for their commitment not only to the promise, but for making a tangible investment in our young people. Also want the Council to know this, consider this a kickoff fundraising effort for the Birmingham Promise. Mark Crosswhite of Alabama Power, CEO Lee Steislinger of Outtech, CEO as well as John Turner, CEO of Regions, for their dedication in creating new career and college opportunities here in our city. And again, stressing that the FASSA completion date is March first, because this is a last dollar opportunity. And then I want to take the time to thank you. Each of you all were in the trenches with me when we transitioned on the apprenticeship side with how we funded and engaged the school system. You took a risk, but you see it's paying off. But it's really cool to see our corporate partners and community come on board to support this effort, so I'm looking at each of you to say thank you for your continued advocacy and passionate commitment, not only to young people, but supporting the Birmingham Promise. Briefly, Mr. President, let the superintendent speak, and then we'll get out of your hair.
Thank you, Mayor Woodfin, and to President Parker, and to the Council at large. Thank you. I will be very brief. For every dollar, for every effort, for every investment that is going towards our Birmingham City School Scholars relative to the promise, we are grateful. We know that there are multiple opportunities for us to invest in our scholars while they are with us and as they prepare to exit. We are thankful for that. We are thankful for the corporate investment, and we have great faith in the future of Birmingham City School Scholars. Appreciate you.
All right, well, thank you all. Mr. Hillier?
Yes, I want to say this is an awesome day. This is great for the citizens of Birmingham and the future of our children. This landscape can actually change Birmingham as a whole and bring us to a whole other level. Home values, real estate values, Arceus Education value, and let people know that Birmingham is open for business. I'm so proud of what you've done. Thank you so much for considering the young people of Birmingham and the future of our economy and our city. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Mr. President. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to speak to the Alabama Hospitality Group, which, which really had corporations from, that have, really from all over the entire state of Alabama, not just our metropolitan area. One, one thing that kept being brought up was, you know, we, we need more employees and we need more skilled employees available to work, to work for us, and the Birmingham Promise immediately came up, gave a little pitch on your behalf, Mayor, hope you don't mind. But it really, really to, to see the interest from, from huge corporations that, that were just amazed that the city of Birmingham, with Mayor Woodfin, is able to pull this off was, was really exciting. And thank you all for, respectively, for each of what y'all have done for this. I think that the, the real way that we're going to address some of the systemic issues that we have in this city is through education and opportunity, and this addresses both of those. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I think Counselor Smithman has something she'd like to say as well.
Yes, thank you. Congratulations, Dr. Herring, Birmingham Board of Education. I'm so proud of you, Mayor Woodfin. Like, you really are showing that you're putting words to your actions. You told us a long time ago that you were going to make this happen, and, you know, I know you, and I know whenever you set your mind on something, you make it happen. I believe, Mayor Woodfin, the rest of the Council, we are the example of taking a problem and solution and connecting it and putting innovation in the middle, and that's exactly what you have done today. And I really want to commend you all because mostly our school system, they have children of color, and a lot of times we have to teach our children, you have to work twice as hard in order to be on top. And I think you guys are helping our children have an equal opportunity to do great in life, and to tell them, you don't have to be a victim, you can be successful in life. So I want to thank you for this.
Thank you, Counselor Smithman, and I'd just like to end out by saying I'm very excited by what's taking place today. I'm always encouraged by the collaboration of all of our stakeholders and the investment that you all are placing in your three companies and through your direction in managing the Birmingham Promise program of what we're investing into our children and our future. Dr. Herring, I just can't say again how thankful I am for you for the work that you do for our city schools and for our children, and I'm just so excited, and thank you, Mayor. I am appreciative. Thank you. Thank you all.
Madam President, I know you-
The Hoyt, yes, sir. I'm so sorry.
Well, and I certainly want to commend the mayor for this initiative, and certainly to corporate America. You don't always have to reinvest, but it's good when you do, because our most valuable asset is our young people, and so they are going to be the persons who take care of us, and so we certainly appreciate you all coming here and not taking it robbery to give back in such a way. I would only, in the Stephen Hoyt vernacular, would suggest that, that you all consider HBCUs. These private colleges are struggling, and many of our young people do choose HBCUs to, for their route of education. So, I'm a graduate, the superintendent's a graduate, HBCU, and, and the mayor's a graduate HBCU, but these are private colleges that certainly have value. And, and so I would hope at some point that you would consider that, because I think if it comes from corporate America, then I think you all can direct where those dollars go. So, I'm suggesting that, because I don't think the initial promise plan had any allowances for private schools, and particularly historical black schools outside of those state schools. So I just want to suggest that. Thank you.
Ms. Abbott?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to the mayor and his team, and to the organizations that are providing support, but I want to say something to the more general area is that for businesses and foundations to invest in young people's education, that's enlightened self-interest, because every business needs good employees. And if you can't find any, you know, I know businesses that are struggling to find qualified employees, so with this low unemployment, almost anyone who really wants a job can find one, but you need to be qualified. You can't just show up and say, well, I'm here, you know, hire me, I'll be your next engineer. Well, you know, if you hadn't been to school, you're not going to be the next engineer. So, other businesses and other foundations need to jump on this same bandwagon, because they need qualified employees, and so like I said, it's enlightened self-interest. You put some money in, you'll get something good out. So, I want to encourage others also. Y'all are great, you're leading the way, but we need, we need more. Don't want to be greedy, but the mayor, the mayor needs more.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, everyone. Mr. Clerk, if we could jump back into-
Okay, before we jump back into the agenda, I forgot to mention that items twenty-eight, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-seven were recommended by Budget and Finance. That's just a note for Council.
All right.
All right, item eight, there's a request for withdrawal on item eight, and so we'll go to sixteen after that. Item sixteen, it's on page five, a resolution accepting the lump sum bid of Richardson Construction Company Incorporated, one thousand and three, Berman Lane, Birmingham, in the amount of one hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars for the Grayson Park renovations. Second rebid, this being the lowest and best bid submitted, and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Richardson Construction Company Incorporated, and substantiating the form contained within the bid documents in the records with said bid, providing that the total compensation payable under the contract not exceed the appropriation.
I move approval.
Counselor Abbott, Counselor Smithman, I want to kind of give a little background. We did ask for a one-week delay for there to be continued conversation with the mayor's office, with the mayor, the mayor's office, Council Woods, myself, the neighborhood, and also the park board, and I think the neighborhood has sent an, well, they sent an email last night asking that could we have one more meeting, because it seems like they just have a couple more things they want to work on. And so if it's okay, if we could just refer this to a committee, probably Parks and Recreation Committee, and allow that one more meeting of all the different parties to come back together, and then we will, I think we'll be able to have everybody is on the same page. So with that, that's my motion, is to refer this to- All right.
Did you say a one-week delay?
No, I just said refer to the Parks and Recreation Committee.
Okay, so you'll put it back, because we, we won't-
Yeah, I'll put it back on there. Okay. All right, ready for a vote? Yeah, I'll put it back on there. Okay. All right. Ready for a vote?
Councilmembers Woods and President Parker. That vote should be up.
That motion passes.
All right. Next should be item twenty, which is on page six in ordinance to amend Title X, motor vehicles in traffic. Chapter nine, stopping, standing, and parking. Article E, parking meters of the general code of the city of Birmingham to accept on-street parking payments by additional means in addition to coin-operated meters and to repeal Section ten dash eight, nine dash eighty-nine enforcement of parking regulations. At Five Point South, public parking deck is obsolete, and I need you see if we're going to pass it today.
Move for unanimous consent?
Second.
Okay. This is item twenty.
Twenty.
Counselor Alexander, President Proketa Alexander?
Yes.
Councilmember Hee?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoit? Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Councilmember Smithman?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
President Parker?
Yes, and what, okay, we bring up all the items dealing with the, uh, just bring them all up at one time.
So you want, uh, twenty-one, that's the next one.
Let's just bring them, I mean, just call them all up dealing with this item with the
Twenty-one is the next one, right?
Yeah, twenty, twenty-one.
Well, they have different votes associated with them, so you need
Okay, y'all want to do them separately?
Well, you can do twenty and twenty-one at the same time.
Let's do twenty, twenty-one.
Okay, twenty-one in ordinance to amend Title X, mortal, uh, motor, I'm sorry, motor vehicles in traffic. Chapter nine, stopping, standing, and parking. Article eight, general provisions to renumber Sections ten, that's nine, that's one. Ten, that's nine, that's two, to restore former Section ten, that's nine, that's two, to regulate the manner of parking vehicles on streets and alleys. And to restore former Section ten, that's nine, that's five, to prohibit parking in specified places. And again, this is, um,
All right.
item permitting operations, so you see for both.
I move for you see. I'm twenty-one.
Councilmember Alexander?
Yes.
Councilmember Hee?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoit? This is, yes, sir.
Just so we can discuss it.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Councilmember Smithman?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods? Out. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
President Parker?
Yes.
All right, so the motion will apply for both items, motion on both items.
Motion, motion on the items?
Second.
All right.
All right, the items, both items before is items twenty and twenty-one. Chief?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, members of the council, I'm gonna ask Mr. James Fowler, who's the director of our Department of Transportation, and also Ms. Lakey Boyd, who serves as deputy director, please come down, and, uh, they'll speak to this item.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Lakey Boyd. I serve as deputy director of the Department of Transportation. We actually have put together a slide deck at the mayor's request. If you could press out printed copies, thank you. As you've noted, there's three matters in front of you. Two have to do with the ordinance and one has to do with a vendor agreement. So we wanted to, based on the conversations we've had up until this point, kind of uniformly address questions that have been raised. Everybody has the same information as you're looking at these matters. So, uh, the two that you have just, um, started to move forward, one is the ordinance modification to accept electronic payment. Um, in simplest terms, this allows form of payment that are not coins. It's actually written in our code today that you have to pay with a coin. So for us to move forward, we need to change the ordinance. Uh, another component of that is actually have to do with what a parking meter is. So right now, it has to be coin-operated, and it's for one space. So we are redefining what that is based on, uh, how technology has changed, but certainly what is already on the ground in other cities. The other ordinance piece is actually a restoration. Um, I would characterize this as more of a housekeeping. As we looked at this chapter, we realized that some of what was repealed during a code overhaul still defers to the state law, but it would be cleaner to also have it in the local ordinance. So those are kind of the ordinance pieces. The one that I want to dig into in a bit more detail is the parking vendor agreement. Um, I do want to give you a bit of background. That is just when, um, we came in to the city and into this department. There was not information on how many parking meters we had, where they were, what condition they were in, what our zones were, that kind of thing. So that pre-work actually had to happen in order for us to be able to move this forward in terms of any other changes in technology. So what we're looking at today with the vendor agreement, if we can go to the next slide, yes. What we were charged with is update on-street parking payment with no cost to the city and as quickly as possible. And so those were very clear constraints that were laid out to us, and so that is how we developed the approach that we did. If we can go to the next slide. Just as a recap, no additional funding was provided in fiscal year twenty related to modernizing park at either, either operating or capital. Um, Pay-By App pretty quickly came out in front. Multi-space kiosks require a capital outlay. Pay-By App does not have a significant equipment investment. And then we also quickly settled on a purchasing cooperative approach because that helps our timeline to approval be considerably accelerated. It is something that the procurement department is in support of. And it also, one piece to understand, is that these are agreeable terms, conditions, that a lot of other cities have said are good conditions for them. So it's a tool a lot of municipalities use to be able to have user fees determined, term length determined, that everyone has found to be acceptable. So we selected Park Mobile as the vendor. Park Mobile is considered among the top industry leaders, you know, some QuickStabs, they have been around, uh, since two thousand eight. They operate in three thousand cities, over eighty-eight million transactions in two thousand nineteen. They are a member of NCPA, which is a purchasing cooperative we as a city are a member of. They have received ongoing positive feedback and have been selected for renewal multiple times by the purchasing cooperative. I think another very important piece of this puzzle is that the Birmingham Parking Authority executed an agreement with Park Mobile last year in late spring. They have not actually rolled that out because they had to update the gate technology first. But as soon as that happened, we really felt that it would be very important for the user experience to have a single app on-street and off-street instead of us operating different systems. That is for eight thousand parking spaces for a term of three years. Lastly, I think it is important to point out that Park Mobile operates in a lot of the regional major markets around us. So Atlanta, Nashville, New Orleans, also Jackson, Mississippi, Montgomery, Mobile. I want to be clear that there is absolutely a lot of ways to approach modernizing parking. And we did a lot of interviews, uh, last spring as we were looking at this and doing our inventory. What is the best way to do it? What have lessons been learned by other major cities? And I think that when you put in place the operational constraints we have today, no capital outlay and quickly as possible because citizens feel like they have been waiting for years, if not decades. So when you take those two pieces, that's what really guided us towards this approach. I want to then, uh, next slide, dig into, we've had a lot of question about this convenience fee and how it works. So I want to be clear, it's a bundled fee for forty-five cents that the customer pays for each transaction. It is a user fee that Park Mobile charges, thirty cents. And then we, as the city, requested to bundle our credit card processing with it. It was important to us that the fee remained flat so that everyone would know what it is. Um, when I spoke with our chief of finance, Lester Smith, two concerns we had. One, there could be variables in that processing rate through the city contract, um, that would have nothing to do with parking. So we couldn't say it will cost you exactly this. And then the second piece was the potential of it ending up being absorbed by the city, which from a budget perspective, we do not have the bandwidth to be able to do. So when you take those two things together, that's where you get the forty-five cent convenience fee. I want to be very clear that it is not a required or mandated fee because we have coin-operated meters on the street. So it's very straightforward. If you don't want to pay a convenience fee, then you can carry coins, and you will continue to have that option. If you don't want to carry coins, then you can pay a very industry-standard user fee and, uh, be able to pay by the convenience of app. We, as an approach, are not changing any parking rates today. We're not changing the days and times that on-street parking is paid for, and we are only adding Pay-By App as an option on top of the coin-operated meters we have today. We can go to the next slide. Uh, this is a, a lot of detail, but we had some questions about what does a single vendor do versus a multi-vendor approach? So I want to be very clear that there are direct and indirect costs in managing a multi-vendor system. And that ranges from us developing a new permit, uh, application system. It involves signage, it involves marketing and the education rollout, software integration, both on the enforcement side, but also in terms of an administrative dashboard. And if we were to do that with multiple vendors, we then have those costs. First off, there are costs to the city, not to the vendor, and second off, it is multiplied times how many vendors we have operating in the city. There would also be an impact on credit card processing fees and the potential of those to be different and fluctuate. Lastly, uh, for the Department of Transportation, we are trying to update, modernize the parking system across the board. So when we came in, there are eight departments that touch on street parking in some way. That in and of itself was a big lift to just start to have that coordinated conversation. If we had to turn our focus to managing multi-vendor operations, that would then become our primary focus in our movement on towing legislation, license plate recognition software rollout, residential permits, valet permits, ticket collections. A lot of other pieces we're in the midst of would definitely be slowed down by needing to turn our focus to that. Uh, next slide, very specifically about today's vendor agreement. I think the big takeaways are that we want to have a unified public experience for on-street and off-street parking in the city. So if you are coming to park, where we have paid parking, you will be able to see and locate that parking and pay for it in a single app. We're also adding, not taking away, we're adding a modern, easy, convenient option. And then there's just kind of a, a quick recap of the vendor agreement, which obviously each of you received in your packets. I want to be clear, the technology at hand that we're talking about is electronic payment at the end of the day, right? So it's not a innovation churn and that is happening in terms of, you know, a, a new device that is going to be invented. There's a lot of changes and modernization that's happening across curbside management. We're at the very infancy of managing our curb, and we've got to get technology on the ground to help us do that. The three-year term, it's in alignment with other agreements. Again, part of the purchasing cooperative, user fees are similar to industry standards. I do want to be clear, a fee change based on the terms of the agreement has to be mutually agreed upon. And there is a termination clause, both for at cause and at convenience, included in this agreement. The customer is paying if they want to pay, so there's a choice to pay the convenience fee. I want to be clear that when I talked with many cities, it is very common that in order to modernize services for greater efficiency and customer service to the citizen, or the visitor in the case of on-street parking as well, it is very common nowadays that that modernization is passed through as a convenience fee, no different frankly than paying your utility bill or paying any kind of online payment. It is something that has become a norm, and it has allowed resource-constrained cities to be able to move forward. Um, there's no capital outlay by the city of Birmingham, and the Pay-By App, once we execute the agreement and start that process, could be on the ground within sixty days. So last slide, in summary, what we put in front of you is an outcome that increases the payment choices, no cost to the city of Birmingham, and we could have it rolled out in sixty days. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or, uh, anything the council would like to ask of the presentation, starting with Mr. Hoit?
Well, thank you, um, Madam President. Um, let me just say what a great presentation, uh,
Thank you.
first off, uh, but there are some questions I wish to ask. And, uh, it had, it speaks to whether or not this is a only source and, um, and what are they as an organization, um, with respect to diversity? And do we have any local partners with this? Because when I do the math, we are talking about, uh, three hundred and sixty, just, you know, if, if for all practical purposes, if people use it the way that I think that they may use it, uh, that would generate about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year. Uh, and if we do a three-year contract, that's about a million and eighty. Um, and so that's a lot of money that's been generated, and, and so any part of that money comes back to this community at all?
Before you answer, I do want to remind, we're, we're really discussing items twenty and twenty-one. Now, that question does relate to twenty-four, which I know we could get to as well, so I ask if you want to go ahead.
I was just responding to the
Perfect. Yes.
The presentation.
You're doing good. Thank you.
Okay, because I didn't have the liberty
Yes, sir.
of being in the committee.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, and what have you.
But good question.
But I did want to ask these questions.
Yes. Go ahead, and we'll, we'll allow, go ahead with the question and then.
Yeah, I'm not against it. I'm just want to point some things out.
Want to bring out some points. Got you.
You know, I've been here a minute. I kind of know how this stuff works. And, um, so I want to understand who gets this money and, and how will this money be used, um, for local folk? You know, I mean, that, you know, uh, they got three thousand cities and what have you, but I would imagine that, um, you know, everything is local. Economy is local, so how does that helps us back here?
I think that
Because I'm providing some convenience, but I want to know, but they're, but they're gonna make a lot of money off of this. You know, I could, I could build a London Bridge if I had enough like this. I mean, really.
Your question is, what is this organization who will have a contract with the city giving back to the community?
Yes, and, and the diversity of the organization, because I don't, I don't have anything on them.
True. Well, I can tell you this is not a, um, this is not a minority-friendly business. This is a majority organization.
Yeah, but generally, we ask people to partner with folk when they come into the city.
Yes, sir. Um, in this case, we're not asking them to partner with anyone.
Okay. That answered my question.
Do you have any more?
Well, I'm, you know, it, it just seems to me that minority businesses are suffering in this city. And if we have opportunities to, uh, to forge relationships, to forge partnership, then we need to do that. I mean, this is a million-dollar contract for all purposes. And none of it will come back to this community. It will go wherever these folks live, I suspect, but, uh, that's a lot. And it's a lot to come and ask the city to sign on to with the, and I understand not having a capital outlay, um, but, you know, principally, you know, we're talking about an economy. And not to suggest that we partner with local folk is, um, is derelict, quite frankly. But, you know, I'm gonna let y'all run with that, but I'm not gonna go for it.
Understood.
Um, we ought to be committed to that. This administration should be committed to that. This council needs to be committed to that. We get the calls. We get the, you know, folks call us and saying, you know, we, y'all never put the local folk in. And so, um, but y'all go ahead on. But I want to see us do the same thing for minority contractors who come in here. And, um, and we just give them a free ride. They just go wherever they need to go. So, uh, but that's, that's my comments. I stick by them.
Mr. President, I, I don't
Hold, hold, hold on a second. Counselor Hoit, are you finished on this round?
Yeah, yeah, I'm finished this round.
Okay. All right, Mr. Mayor, if you'll respond back. Okay, all right, Mr. Mayor, if you'll respond back, and then we'll go to Council Abbott and Council O'Quinn.
Just briefly, I think the opportunity to partner with an actual minority vendor doesn't exist because this actual type of fee, there are no minorities in this space as it relates to this particular service. But I think there are other opportunities within other departments as we lay out and engage doing business for partnership with minorities. So his point is well-taken, the opportunity presents itself, which it has in the past, currently and in the future will continue to do. The other point he made was giving back to the community, just a simple Google search. Park Mobile Cares is a charitable owner of Park Mobile LLC as an organization. And there are many organizations here listed, which include Habitat for Humanity, United Way, Salvation Army, and probably at least 10 other organizations that they give money to back to the community. So both of his points are not only well-taken, but we agree with it.
Okay, all right. I'm hoping AG Gas and Boys and Girls could be included in that.
Okay, let's not, Nate, let's move on. Councilor Abbott, Councilor O'Quinn.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Well, so this is just a payment system, correct?
That's it.
Okay, so it's just a payment system, so the rest of this stuff, towing legislation, I don't know what an LPR is, but an LPR rollout, LPR?
License plate.
Oh, okay, those are those cameras that we're going to get, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, residential permitting, which I'm deeply interested in, valet permits, which I'm deeply interested in, ticket collections, which I'm deeply, deeply interested in.
Enforcement, enforcement, enforcement.
And the PEO team changes, I don't know what a PEO is either, but...
Enforcement.
Maybe y'all could not use acronyms on these things when you give them out to us, I know it. But anyway, the question is, okay, the first thing is, this is just the beginning of having a payment system, so we actually get paid for parking instead of what happens sometimes when we don't.
Yes, ma'am.
But the other questions that I had, I like the resource-constrained cities designation for Birmingham. We are resource-constrained. Missing and broken meters, we have a lot of meters that are just totally gone. And then we have meters that don't operate, and we have a few whose heads have been knocked off. Are we going to replace those along with this new payment system? Are we going to beef up our meters so that they're all present?
So the beauty of this program is the pay-by-app allows you to pay at those meters that are broken to receive coins. So you can still actually pay for that meter, you just can't use the coin for that particular meter. But through our, through our phased project of phase in, we will continue to upgrade our meters as well, so they dance together.
Yeah, because we do have a lot that are missing. And then the comment was made that nothing comes back to the city, don't we get the payments for people parking? I mean, the only thing the payment company gets is the 30 cents.
Yes.
And we get, we get everything else, is that accurate?
That's correct, the city still will be collecting for people to pay on our on-street parking.
Okay, well, because that's important, very important, is for the city to actually get the money. So I think those are all my questions for right now, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So this is an exciting day for the city of Birmingham, I believe. And this has been a long time coming. Folks especially who have to do business in the city center have been asking for this for a long time. And, you know, there have been previous initiatives to try and do this, and we are only the latest persons to take up this baton. So I think, you know, I just want to say that I'm very proud that we get the opportunity to carry that baton across the finish line. So I am fully in support of items 20 and 21. I do have questions about the Park Mobile agreement when we get to item 24. But I just wanted to say that the ordinance changes in item 20 and 21, I think, are absolutely necessary part of what needs to be done. So want to express my support for those, but when we come to item 24, I do have some questions about it.
You have some motions too, or just questions?
Well, we've moved these two items.
I know, but I'm talking about the 24.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Councilor Hoyt, do we need to come back to you? We good on this end, everybody? We're okay here? All right, Councilor Hoyt, no, what's, Councilor Hoyt?
Yes, well...
Let me just say again, if we had a disparity study in place, I wouldn't have to raise the issue of minority participation.
Hold on, Councilor, Mr. Mayor.
Those didn't even be...
Hold on, I was asking Mr. Mayor to allow you to speak, that's what I was saying.
Now, that would be the appropriate thing.
Yes, sir, that's what I was trying to do, yes, sir.
Thank you, you're so kind.
Yes, sir, go ahead, Councilor Hoyt.
You're a great president, I appreciate that.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yeah, but if we had this in place, we would have to raise these questions. You know, and I'm just, I'm really disenchanted that the fact that folk get to come in here, get a million-dollar contract, and don't have any local folk a part of that dynamic, that should be a concern for all of us. I mean, that's just, that's just how the way it works. I think in some communities, if you went to Atlanta, I think they have a 35% or 30% or something minority participation. So I'm just, you know, that seemed to be the hallmark of this administration, we don't seem to be concerned about that. But I'm done, my vote will reflect my comments.
Mr. President, the beauty of this conversation is we have to do our homework. Park Mobile is in the city of Atlanta. There is no minority vendor with Park Mobile in Atlanta, or any other city in America for that matter. The other thing is, Councilor Hoyt is right, yes, sir.
Councilor Hoyt, same thing I asked of the mayor when you were...
I'm getting ready to Google.
No, 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 hold on, but the same respect that when you were speaking, I asked Mr. Mayor.
Good.
Okay, let's give that backwards, okay, all right.
I do apologize.
Yes, sir, thank you.
The other thing, the other thing, Council, we look forward to bringing some information before you all about a disparity study. We know there's, the one we have has been outdated and it's time to come back. So we look forward to bring that information to you as soon as it clears legal hurdles. The third thing is this, there are some undertones and comments made about this administration in support of minority participation. We know why those comments are made, but it would be cool to stick with facts. Thank you, Mr. President.
We're voting on these two items, let's call, let's vote, Mr. Council Hoyt, let's vote, I'll recognize you.
Thank you.
After the vote, you going to comment, you going to go back, you going to comment on what Mr. Mayor said?
I do need to comment.
Okay, all right.
And that is to say that I've been very consistent in raising the issue of minority participation with five previous mayors, and this mayor should not get a buy. Now, you can go check the record, pull every tape, every anything, and I think my colleagues know that. So there's nothing new about me raising this issue of inclusion, because it's one that has to be raised and one that should be raised. But, you know, if things were equal and we lived in a utopian society, then, you know, that would be one thing, but we don't. And out of sight, out of mind. And so I stand by principle. Ain't nothing changed, I've gotten awards for advocating on behalf of minority participation in this city. And I gave, wrote the legislation for the historical underutilized businesses policy that we have in the city today. And I see the contracts come through here, and they're very little, that has African-American attached to them. That's a fact.
Okay. All right, we're ready to vote on items 20, 21. All right, those items pass, next item, Mr. Clark.
Should be item 24, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Park Mobile LLC to provide payment services for on-street parking in other city of Birmingham parking facilities that may be designated pursuant to the terms of the agreement. For a term of three years with Park Mobile's compensation to come from a service fee of 45 cents per transaction, motion please.
I move approval.
All right, it was Council Abbott, Council Smithman, Mr. Mayor. You on item 24 now?
Yes.
Onto the...
We yield to this body, I think the presentation we had was bondo for all three.
Okay. Dr. Quinn, and I guess we'll go this way, then we'll go back that way, kick it off.
All right, so we did consider this item in Transportation Committee. And I'll admit that I've been very excited about this. You know, modernizing on-street parking was one of the first things that we tried to address in the Transportation Committee, starting back in early 2018. And however, when we considered it in Transportation Committee, probably didn't do enough due diligence in looking at the, all the, considering all the terms of the contract. So my main reservation about this Park Mobile contract, it has nothing to do with the company or the services that they're offering. As was mentioned before, they're an international company, they have a good product. You know, notwithstanding Council Hoyt's concern about minority participation, I think that's a valid point. But my main reservation is about exclusivity. So this agreement would grant Park Mobile a three-year monopoly on payment services in the city of Birmingham. And I think Council Hoyt's estimates are pretty conservative. So if you look at, you know, you just estimate a couple of electronic payments per parking meter per day, and, you know, quickly adds up to more than, you know, a million dollars, a couple, maybe even a couple of million dollars annually for this company. And I know that there are other payment, mobile, electronic payment companies on the cooperative purchasing group that was utilized. So that's my first point. There are other companies that offer the service in that cooperative. So I'm not necessarily concerned that we identified Park Mobile as one of the companies that we would utilize, but why we came to this exclusive agreement situation. And I want to point out a couple of things that are, were mentioned. So in your presentation, you mentioned that they would be providing stickers and signage and that there would be some enforcement pieces as well. But I want to mention that in, on page 20 of the agreement, under Schedule 3, number 3, it says that Park Mobile will provide the signage, but that the client, i.e. the city of Birmingham, will actually be responsible for the installation. The stickers, same thing, the Park Mobile will provide the stickers, but the client is responsible for the installation and any related cost. And then if you skip down to the additional services, the, there's other services that are listed here, which include the enforcement piece. And it says that Park Mobile may provide the following development activities and additional services for a fee to be determined by Park Mobile. So the enforcement piece is not included as a service within the basic agreement. So therefore, some of the arguments that are being made for exclusivity really don't, you know, hold weight with me because if all we're, if all Park Mobile is doing for us is providing some signs and some stickers, but we're going to be responsible, the city of Birmingham and our staff will be responsible for going out and installing those. I got some discretionary funds that you guys can have access to for some signs and some stickers. They don't appear to be providing the enforcement piece in, as a term of the agreement. That's going to be something that they will charge for additionally. And the root of my concern is really that this is essentially software and that we know how quickly technology progresses. There's something new, you know, every year. And for us to give a exclusive agreement for essentially what a software concerns me. And because in this situation, we're not allowing for competition such that that convenience fee, there's no pressure on the vendor to try and reduce that convenience fee. There's no competition set up. Park Mobile can, you know, with this agreement, charge that 45-cent convenience fee guaranteed for the term of the contract, that'd be three years.
Mr. President, let me first start by, I genuinely mean this, thanking Dr. O'Quinn. I thank one for not only chairing this committee, but his commitment to getting the city to a point where it's actually making advancements in efficiency as it relates to all forms of how we relate to a city's infrastructure, parking, public transportation, busing, et cetera. But that acknowledgement and thank you also goes to Crystal Smithman, as well as John Hillyard, who's sitting on that committee, who share the same passion as he does. So I want to thank three committee members for pushing us to get to the today where we are. I want to address every issue without trying to sound too redundant on what she's already shared. There have been words like exclusivity use and monopoly use. We see it differently as an administration. Which brings me to my next thank you. Jane Fowler and Lakey Boy, who we actually do a hurricane-leaning task, not just with this one topic, but all the other topics you all are interested in as it relates to how we engage our infrastructure out here. Have a very limited staff, and even crazier, she's, I mean, Ms. Abbott's right, one of the cities, we're one of those cities with constrained resources. With the limited staff, they have even more of a limited budget. And so when you think about this whole idea, as we pilot this and spread this pilot out over 36 months, and this agreement over 36 months, if you try to integrate additional organizations who are isolated and the payment fee only, a couple of things you need to acknowledge. One is that we're, this is isolated to software integration being incorporated into our system. Meaning if you open it up to multiple vendors, that's on us to pay for that. Having this one vendor do it, they're going to pay for it. You mentioned enforcement, with the software integration into our process also includes enforcement. The other thing is, you mentioned the signage, so related to our staff. Yes, they're asking us to do that, but that doesn't have a cost because our employees who work our meters every day already engage in our meters. Their, this organization is providing the actual signage to us, and our staff will engage the meters every day, probably with a screw. And the sign is going to go ahead and place them on every meter they already engage every day. So that's not really additional cost as much as it is... So, that's not really additional cost as much as it is labor, and that labor is already technically provided because our staff engage meters every day. The other thing is, you mentioned on page twenty in this contract, additional services. Well, the first words are really important because it says at the request of the client and upon agreement. And so, if we don't agree to these things, then it won't happen. The other thing is this, um, let me find my point, because I wrote it down. You talked about this whole convenience fee and how, um, there's no competition as it relates to this convenience fee. And if you have others, then people are more in line, uh, to keep convenience fees low. We have a slight different take on that. We believe that having multiple vendors at play allows convenience fees to fluctuate, and the city wouldn't be in control. Um, and if this is, if the pay-by app is a way to increase, um, the opportunity for people to actually pay at meters, in addition to that, for the city to start finally collecting on meters, um, then you're going to have less of that if there's actual fluctuation because vendors are competing as it relates to their, uh, service fee. No different than when any of us go to a bank that's not ours, and you notice one could be two-fifty, another one can be three-fifty, if you're in Miami, it's probably five dollars. So, I know that may be a bad example, but you see where I'm going with that. So, as an administration, I'm, and, and the, the people have been doing this work for quite some time, we're comfortable with this thirty-six-month relationship with one vendor. Uh, we're more than welcome to open it up past this thirty-six months. Uh, but we believe, based on studying other cities too, who have tried to roll out multiple vendors at one time, that it's been jumbled, and it wasn't smooth, it wasn't efficient. And I know Ms. Boyd can speak to that, to other cities.
Yes, uh, it was something that, um, the calls I made early in the spring last year were Pittsburgh, Chicago, Baltimore, Detroit, um, Nashville. But I just recently, uh, in the last sixty days, City of Atlanta went to a multi-vendor platform. This was actually after years of having privatized parking, then bringing it back into the city. So, they have a much longer path in modernizing their parking. But I actually, um, had an opportunity to talk to the commissioner last week, and he looked me in the face and said, "You want to go from coin-only with no technology to managing multiple vendors, do you have a dedicated team?" And I indicated, "We did not." Um, I am the dedicated team to parking, uh, in terms of the software side and the management side. So, he was, um, he shared the experience, which was, it has been bumpy. They have not gotten all their vendors live, frankly, on the multi-vendor platform. Ironically, Park Mobile was the successful vendor to go live on the first day of operations.
So, the truth, Counselor, I mean, Dr. O'Quinn, I know this is something that, uh, the administration and where you are with this, we, we're just, we, we're not aligned in agreement, uh, but this is, uh, as an administration, this is the way, we feel the best way to go is with this one vendor to make sure this can be successful as it relates to integrating software, um, and the use of paying outside of coins. Uh, Mr. President, um, that's our remarks of that.
Okay, what I want to do is Counselor Woods, since he hasn't spoken yet, let's go to him, and then we'll come back around with you and Counsel Hoyt. Let's go give Counsel Woods an opportunity to speak on this matter. Go ahead.
Uh, right, so on a side note, before I jump on this topic, I did want to, uh, acknowledge and commend Counsel Hoyt for really all the work that he's done in advocating for, uh, minority businesses over the years. You know, it's something that we do have to do better as a city, and for whatever reason, it hasn't happened organically. Uh, but I did want to say it while I was thinking about it, but I don't want to mix those two, uh, topics right now. You mentioned our current, uh, enforcement software. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, our current enforcement software is Brazos, which is Tyler Technology. It is in a ten-year agreement that was executed as an add-on to a municipal court agreement. Uh, it is not a significant market share in the enforcement industry. It is not compatible with BPD software. So, it has been, uh, frankly, a challenge to find companies that are willing to integrate with our software.
Okay, is there any, I guess openness, you know, we're talking about the three years, is there any openness to, say, twelve months? Like, what is, why, what is, explain the three-year mark and the importance of that.
The three years are a longer runway to actually get the services for free. So, when you think about the software integration that we're not responsible for paying, um, if you limit that to one year, um, at a certain point with those limited funds to actually go to this department, if you want to integrate the service, especially, especially if you want to use multiple vendors, the vendors want to agree to the software integration, um, as far as actually implementing it. They would put that on us, and then we would have to pay for it. That's one. Um, the second thing is on the education side of this. Again, um, there's education slash communication around, um, what this new service will be. Well, again, on, on the education side, that's free. We don't have to pay for it. They're assisting in that, so that's two. The third thing is, um, again, the alignment with the Birmingham Parking Authority, uh, which if I'm correct, you all appoint those members. They have just entered a three-year deal with the same organization. So, we want an alignment with this organization to make sure, as she said, I'm restating what she said. If you visit our city, or you live in the city, you leave your home, or you leave wherever you're, um, coming from, and you, whether you choose to park on the street, or park in this parking deck to come to a city council meeting, it's the same organization, it's the same app. That's why we chose three, three years.
Is there openness to doing less than that?
No, so here, here is the, here is the out, if you want an out. If the, if we're concerned about a convenience fees going up, they have to give us notice. In addition to that, we have to agree to it. Um, if they don't, if we don't, um, there's an out. So, if something doesn't work out where we think it's not beneficial to the city within thirty-six months, as long as ample notice is given on our side, or they want out, they give us ample notice, we have an out within the contract that's been presented to you. Um, in addition to that, um, if we, she's done all the research on this. There's been some consistency in this organization that's existed over the last twelve years, throughout all of these cities they're in. They have a pretty good reputation, which also includes making sure they're not gouging prices as it relates to that actual con- uh, convenience fee that they actually charge, that's given to the actual customer. So, if you're asking in this thirty-six months, um, where we're giving monthly reports to the Transportation Committee, which includes Dr. O'Quinn and Crystal Smithman and John Hiller, uh, for all nine of y'all, if you wanted, all wanted at a monthly meeting, um, how is this working? If you're not pleased with it, what options we can exercise, there is an out.
Do we have like an estimate of what the value of this contract would be to Park Mobile?
Do you, I, I don't. No, sir. What I can tell you, um, without giving any numbers, I think each of you, we've had these one-on-one conversations. We've had some of these conversations in committees. What we should be collecting on our meters, and her favorite word is enforcement lately, uh, we are, um, highly under what we're supposed to be doing. Some would say because of the broken meter. Some would say because people don't, um, carry coins. Others would simply say, "You're, you're not giving us an option to, another option to pay." Uh, this addresses all of that, and we know, uh, what we're supposed to be collecting off, what, how many meters? Four? What, three thousand what? Exactly, no?
Three thousand nine hundred and forty-five.
Three thousand nine hundred and forty-five meters throughout our city. Uh, this puts us in a position, uh, to do what we're supposed to do on the enforcement side, but also giving options to those who use our streets to park. In addition to that, some of you all may see that convenience fee and think that's not cool. Oh, I want you to consider this. Nine of you all stayed in an apartment complex. You walk down to, uh, the, the, the rent manager's office, you use check or cash, you're not, you, you don't, you're not charged a fee. But if you take the same time in your apartment and do that online, you have to pay a fee. No different than if you pay your Alabama power bill online versus going down to the actual physical location. And so, when we talk about that fee, that's kind of in the world it's in.
It's just, uh, I guess difficult to consider all the elements, not knowing the numbers, like specifically, you know, what, are we leaving money on the table? What do we save by going with a disruptive deal?
How we currently been doing parking is we're leaving a lot of money on the table. This actually allows us to actually start collecting. So, no, we're not leaving money on the table. If you bring multiple vendors in here, um, that does not, there is no correlation at all to multiple vendors and more money. That's just not the case. We're talking about a processing fee.
So, I guess Park Mobile, they'll bring their software in, and they'll basically manage that software for us? Or are we paying like a, a fee to use their software? Or is it basically that fee, like, what is their deliverable? Is there any deliverable outside of software and signage?
It is the processing, the payment, and the inter- and the interface with having an electronic payment tied to the parking system. So, they sell an app. I mean, they sell technology to have that interface, so they have an API that does that. I think that, if I'm understanding your question correctly, we're paying for the app because we, as a city, don't have in-house talent to develop an application to process payment and tie it to a geographic system that then allocates and tells us where the parking is. They do. They are coming to the city because they, um, have a profit on the user fee, as has been discussed. We're asking them to process the credit card so that it stays a flat fee. And we firmly believe, in talking to other cities, that just having electronic payment as an option will significantly start to incent payment for the parking service. So, in a general number way, I can tell you that both, uh, the cities I spoke with, and then the International Parking and Mobility Institute, that's one of the industry organizations, estimates that just putting electronic payment on the ground with no other changes in policy or enforcement or anything, generally ups about a thirty to fifty percent in the fees collected. So, the feedback, as the mayor was saying, that we get about why the meter collections year over year have gone down is for a variety of reasons. So, I'm hesitant to give you an estimate, and the reason is, we really aren't collecting out of the meters probably a quarter of what we should be. So, what we're trying to do is give another payment option so that that fee for service is collected and goes into the general fund, and hopefully, you know, continues to fund infrastructure improvements.
I guess so, we're basically buying a license, like, I guess we're buying the app, or we're licensing that, licensing the right to use the app year after year? Or like, is there a si- is there a scenario where we own the app at any point?
So, um, I don't know that there's a scenario that we would own the app, but to your question about, um, what deliverable are we receiving? So, uh, I guess there's kind of two, as I see it. So, one is it gives us the ability to recover the money that we're not currently collecting, so that's one, and that's a significant one. But the second one is, the second deliverable is the simplicity of it. Because it is an international company, it's one that people that visit other cities are familiar with. It's a proven technology, uh, they've worked the bugs out of that system, it's consistent with our local parking authority, and so, it's simple for the public. And so, that's the second major deliverable, so collection of addition, additional terms, and then also just the simplicity of the system, so.
I mean, like, it's just tough not knowing kind of what, uh, the dollar value associated. For instance, uh, permit fees, you know, we increased permit fees, we kind of knew what that amount, or projected what that amount was, and we're able to kind of budget that going forward into this fiscal year. Um, knowing what that amount would be, I think, could help us determine if the value we're getting back from Park Mobile is, is, um, you know, if it balances out, net positive, net loss. But, um, you know, I, I would ask that you guys consider less than a three-year commitment.
Counsel Woods.
I think you've answered all my questions.
To his, to his main point, is where he's, where he asks, Mr. President, where your colleague Counsel Woods actually states that, well, his concern is, you know, not knowing. Uh, this is what I can tell you, over, over the four years, collections have done this. Four years ago, we were collecting about a million dollars. Probably eighteen, we were about eight-hundred thousand. Last year, we were six-hundred thirty thousand. We're losing money every year by not integrating this technology. Between the combination of a broken meter or people not carrying coins. This technology with this one organization that's, that's used internationally, does two things. Whether, if the meter's broken or a person doesn't have a coin, they can still pay. They can, I'm sorry, they can now pay. So, what we, what we can, can predict, without giving you a, a solid number, is this slide you continue to see every year, will do this, and eventually do this.
All right, um, Dr. Quinn, then.
Sure.
Counsel Hoyt, we'll go back around this way.
Uh, so, I just want to reiterate that, you know, I, I support, support this initiative. You know, folks have been asking this, for this, for a long time. I think the vast majority of that three thousand nine hundred and forty-five meters are in District Five. Um, so, I, I support this. However, I'm concerned that some of the assertions that are being made are not actually included in the contract, uh, or in the agreement. So, it wa- it's, you know, it was stated that, um, integration with the Brazos enforcement system, uh, was part of the services that Park Mobile would be providing. But it clearly states on, in, in, you know, in the schedule, Schedules One, Two, and Three. On Schedule Three, it says that additional services, integration to client-requested third parties is part of something that would require, uh, the parties to agree to, and that, that would be an additional fee. So, so, that being said, um, again, you know, I, I would like to see us move forward on, on allowing this additional payment option to, to be available to people who live and visit, um, the city center. I, I think there's enough questions, or I have enough questions, that, um, I would ask the council if we could delay this item just one week to resolve any ambiguity that's here.
All right, so, at the proper time, we'll come back to Dr. Quinn, but want to make sure we go down this way. Counsel Abbott, Counsel Smithman, everybody's, Counsel Hoyt, I didn't know if you were sick. Okay, all right, Counsel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President.
Hoyt, and then we'll come, Counsel Smith, I'm sorry, I just want to get the order. Counsel Hoyt, then, if Counsel Smith or Counsel Abbott has something to say. And then we'll come back and recognize Dr. Quinn, and we will move forward. Yes, sir, Counsel Hoyt.
Yeah, well, and, again, let me say, I think this is something that we need. I think it's a good idea, but I think we also, uh, have to be consistent in what we do. I spent last night, um, talking with one of the administrators, uh, of the city regarding a ex- exclusivity. I guess I'm saying that right. Am I messing that up? Okay, exclusivity, um, clause, uh, with, uh, as relates to wall, I mean, uh, relates to the, um, the crossplex. And they were told, the developers told, that they didn't want to, the city don't want to ever do that. Uh, because, you know, uh, you know, if the city decided to go in a different direction later on, we ought to be able to, be able to do that because we own the property. And so, I'm saying here, one regard, we, we, we make allowances for it, and then another one, we're saying this is not something we need to do as a city. I had this conversation last night with, with, uh, with the economic development person. So, I'm just trying to understand consistency. And while it's, it's being allowed here, and then I'm told that, um, you know, a certain organization, I think it's pretty clear who it is, uh, uh, asking for the same type of, of arrangement, but we saying we don't do that. So, I'm just, just saying, colleagues, I think it'd be prudent if we delay this item and get some understanding. Because, um, and if it's something we're gonna use, then we need to, you know, and when you open Pandora's box, you're gonna have to, these other folk are gonna come in here and want the same kind of, uh, dynamic. I don't know you want to do that because at some point, um, you know, we had parking at the airport when I was on Airport Authority. But we had a private person running it initially, and they talked about, you know, money's being missed and all this kind of stuff. And so, then we decided to bring a new company in and put the cameras and what have you, and that kind of safeguarded things, and, and we brought it back in-house. And they've been making money ever since, but now, I don't know if that's still in place now because I hadn't been on that board in about five years. Uh, but I'm just saying, there's some caution here. Um, and notwithstanding this wonderful presentation that Ms., what's her name, Ms. Boyd, is it? Ms. Boyd has made because you, you were excellent, and, um, and I appreciate you being in detail. But I, but we got the, we got to guard, um, our responsibility here as legislators. And so, just don't want to give anybody a blank check.
Mr. President.
And with no responsibility, and then you have it for three years. Uh, Counsel Woods, uh, let me share with you what we've done in the past. Um, if we agreed to a three-year contract, uh, it would be renewable on annual basis. That gives us an opportunity to relook at this and see if this is working for us and what have you. But three years is a long time to wait to see whether or not, uh, we're gonna profit from this, uh, from this, uh, uh, program here. So, uh, that is what then, uh, consistent. And if you don't believe me, we got two attorneys here, and they are impartial, as I'm told. Uh, at least we are reminded of and what have you, and so, they can verify.
Mr. President.
Okay. You're gonna respond to only because I want to call on other.
Very briefly, it's very quick. I, I, I will agree that, I would ask Counsel Woods to, um, talk to the legal department anytime he wants. They can provide to you that that does not exist in every contract. What they can also tell you, what we'll, will tell you, um, is that, uh, you know, this is not micromobility, this is not economic development. So, we need to be careful when we're comparing apples and oranges. Uh, this is about a processing fee. And so, this, this whole notion of a monopoly is just, it's, uh, for argument's sake, I can understand why that word is continuing to be in use. But it, it, it doesn't fit when we're telling you we don't have the internal resources, manpower, or financial power. Um, nor do we think it's in the city's best interest or the customer's best interest to roll out various organizations, uh, for processing fee purposes. And that, within this thirty-six months, if we feel, based on the information we'll share with you every month, so you'll have the same information we have, that it is not in the best interest of the city, we can exercise our out.
All right, Counsel Smithman or Counsel Abbott, you all look good? I don't know.
Okay, well, I just wanted to say, in regards to the contract, I worked in contract management for AT&T for the last eight years of my work life, and three and five-year contracts are the norm. You know, very few people want to enter into a one-year contract or a two-year contract because there's a lot involved, and they're going to have to expend funds also. So, they're go- I mean, a three-year contract is pretty normal. So, I didn't want anybody to think it was some kind of weird thing that only the city of Birmingham does. And five-year contracts are even better because you get, you get tied into that, those rates, and you get to keep them. So, there are benefits to both sides. But, um, I wanted to ask about the meter enforcement officers that we have now that drive around and find all the people who, you know, aren't paying their meters. So, how are they going to be integrated into this new system so that they know who hasn't paid and who has paid? If you put in coins, it'll be obvious, but if you've paid on the app, how will they know?
So, right now, y'all know they ride around, and it's, the process is you, 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 till you, when you get to the car, you can, um, assess, do you have a violator? Uh, let's, but let's go big picture first. First thing you all did, um, which we appreciate, you allowed them to move away from the Department of Transportation and move into the actual police department for enforcement purposes. So, we can tell you, even, even with the change in uniform and the vehicle, um, it's been better for them as far as, um, actually enforcement. You then move to their handheld devices. When you integrate this software into their handheld devices, it now allows them to actually target those violators and go directly to them and be able to skip over the car, uh, that's paying. So, it can go, it can take them, technology allows us to go straight to a violator.
Okay, so will they have two handhelds?
That's exactly what we're talking about. The interface will all be on a single handheld. And so, while we still have the coin operated on the ground, which we thought was very important at this rollout, it can be a comparison, but it's all in a single handheld. And I think that the key is it starts to make them much more efficient, and we think they'll be able to cover more ground, kind of a geographic expansion. And then, as we've discussed, the, the change in vehicles when we get the like, electric fleet first phase, that's what really will start to tie into the other pieces that we want to. All back to the same handheld, and that technology of letting us know where the parking spaces are, what has been allocated and what has not, that translates into the permit system as well.
Okay, and one other question, and that's about the cooperative. Uh, how ma- I know that we're part of the cooperative, and we can use any company that's approved on, in the cooperative. So, how many parking companies are in the cooperative?
So, when we looked, um, which would have been kind of late spring, early summer last year, there were, I believe it was eight, it was less than ten. And, um, we were kind of going through calling a lot of other cities, trying to get feedback, looking at their terms that are uploaded to the purchasing cooperative. I think pretty quickly you get to three industry leaders. And as we mentioned, the Birmingham Parking Authority executing a three-year term agreement with Park Mobile is, I think, at the end, what really pushed it forward. I think that the other piece that hasn't been touched on, that I think, uh, you know, I do want to add to the conversation, is that the ability of the additional data we're going to get from that app interface and knowing where people are parking and how they're parking. Because right now, all we know is where the citations are. We don't really understand that behavior. Getting data around that is what's gonna help us make better policies as we continue to modernize.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Boyd, so you're saying this is the best deal that we have for having a park and meter app, is that correct?
I absolutely firmly believe that if we want to have no capital outlay to the city, and we want it to be as quick as possible, yes.
Okay, so, um, I don't think anybody else works downtown, but I work downtown. I know I really, really want this app because I actually see the parking meter people with their handheld, um, doing the things that Mayor Woodfin has said. I know I struggle every day and sometimes get a ticket, I will have to admit, because I don't have coins. In fact, some of my friends just text me, were like, we really, really need this. So, I really want to urge my colleagues for us not to delay this a lot longer. Um, I know we need more money for street paving, to fix our sewage systems. Like, I really, really want you all not to delay this because I really, really need this as a small business owner to help me with parking, because parking these parking decks is expensive. So, I know we have a lot of technical things, but we really, really need this for people who work in downtown.
Let me go to Counsel Williams, he has spoken. So, I want to do the first.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just wanted to point out, uh, that I guess maybe since I'm over public safety, there's some confusion. But my office gets a, a amazing amount of phone calls about, um, about this issue. Uh, specifically with, um, why in the world have we not updated yet? Um, is, is, is the main, um, phone call we get. But also, you know, whatever the struggle might be that Crystal kind of alluded, Counselor Smithman kind of alluded to about having, having, you know, not having a, a pocket full of change every time you want to go eat at a restaurant or have a meeting downtown. We're a city that, uh, that should be beyond that right now. It is 2020. Um, and I also want to point out, we keep talking about this, this being a three-year agreement. Um, but we have a, a termination for convenience clause where we can get out of this in thirty days if it's not working for us. So, I want to urge my colleagues also to pass this. You know, if it's not gonna work for us, it's not gonna work, and we'll terminate it. But right now, our citizens and those that, that, you know, mainly that visit the city and are driving that revenue into the city, we need to make sure we're capturing that in our city coffers. So, I urge my colleagues to please pass this item.
All right, so here's where we are. Call on Counselor, I know, I was about to do, I think everybody's had the chance to at least speak one time. So, uh, I would want to do Dr. Quinn, Counsel Hoyt, is that all on the next round here? Okay, so let's go, and then we're gonna wrap it up.
Yeah, so, I'm.
And move forward.
I'm clear on most things. I, I do want to follow up on, in asking, so, on the enforcement piece, we already have the handheld applica- the handheld devices. Our parking enforcement officers already have the handheld devices. This agreement will include them having the application on that handheld device that they can use to verify whether or not the person is paid. I, I know part of our plan is with the new, uh, electric vehicles that we have purchased for our parking enforcement officers, uh, we are planning to have LPR cameras uh, in those vehicles to help with parking enforcement. Is, is that going to be a different piece than what is included in this contract?
No, it does all integrate, and I think that the key is all of the technology is now based, well, the future of the technology is based on license plates, so there's no pay-in display. And that is why the pay-by app and getting that out first actually starts to line us up better for what we want to do as the enforcement evolves.
So, i- i- it integrates, but th- that is not a service. The LPR piece is not a service that's included in this agreement, is that correct?
We would have to purchase the cameras and the access to the cameras, is that what you're asking? But there is an interface between the camera and the payment software.
Right.
Yes.
Right, but that piece is not included in this agreement. If, if I'm reading the agreement correctly.
I would say that we have not had a discussion to include it in the agreement because we don't have the cameras today.
Okay, that, I'm good.
All right, Counsel Hoyt, and then after that, we'll take some motions.
Yes, just, just for, um, for clarity, um, I'm looking at two different contracts. One is twenty-seven on our agenda, the other one is thirty-one. Two different contracts, standard language that the city uses with respect to many of the dynamics of a contract. And so, they are consistent, uh, in terms of this core tenant value and what have you in the contract. So, it was said that I'm traded, I'm, listen, one thing I can do, I can read and understand. And I know contracts, I definitely have been a contract administrator. And so, uh, I too have, uh, had the responsibility of reading, uh, contract for compliance. And so, um, the, uh, what we do as a law department is, uh, consistent. Uh, and so, if we, uh, use the word exclu- uh, exclusivity, then, um, it is used in all, it means same thing in all of our contracts. If we use that language, if we choose to, to interject. But you know, these, uh, contracts are what's called cop and pace. That's all, they're standard. So, I just want to explain that to the public.
Okay, all right, so here's where we are. We have Item Twenty-Four before us, um, for approval. So, Dr. Quinn, do you have a, do you have a substitute motion? No, I'm good. All right, good. All right, there's been a motion, uh, Ms. Clark, we're ready to vote. Any other, I don't see any other speakers up here. Well, I mean, there's, obviously, the motion is before us, so, um, I think we're ready to vote. Ms. Clark. Item Twenty-Four.
Counsel Williams.
Yeah, my iPad's down. I can't make up my mind. No, yes.
You said yes?
Yes, very much yes.
That vote should be.
All right, uh, that item passes. Uh, next item, Court.
Twenty-five is withdrawn, next should be twenty-seven. Item Twenty-seven, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with BeGrace Media LLC to provide management, social, media, and public relations for the city of Birmingham, District Seven. And District Nine offices said fee for these services not to exceed thirteen thousand six hundred dollars, inclusive of any reimbursable expenses, expenses. These services will begin February the first, two thousand and twenty, and include no later than June thirty, two thousand and twenty. Please note that on twenty-seven, the amount has changed, yeah, seventeen thousand three hundred dollars instead of thirteen thousand six hundred dollars.
All right, we're ready to vote. We have a motion on this. All right, that was, I think, Counsel Abbott, Counsel Hilliard, ready for a vote. Okay, you have, okay, I, I can't see, but go ahead. I, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, well, and I brought this, um, issue, I'm, I'm in favor, I'm gonna vote for it. But I, I just want to understand, if we change the dollar amount in this, to the legal department, do we not have to advertise this again?
I'll have Attorney Lawson to speak to that.
Hi, Yolanda Lawson, Office of City Attorney.
Bring the mic to you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Yolanda Lawson, City Attorney, Office of City Attorney, excuse me. Um, this was actually an appointment letter, and they requested that it be placed on there, and it's for professional services, and it's our understanding that it was part of the discretionary funds. So, that's why.
So, we wouldn't have to re-advertise?
It was not advertised.
Oh, it's not advertised?
No, sir.
So, you don't have to do that?
Because it was a professional service, and it was part of, budgeted as part of.
Because I thought the seven-seven-two required it, required us to, to do that, at least.
Well, this was not presented as a seven res- a seven-seven-two resolution.
I just want to understand.
Yes, sir, that's fine.
You know, I, I don't know everything, I know a few things.
No.
You know, I'm not questioning you, attorney.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, I just want to understand the process. Because I'm, in my mind, I'm thinking about some other things that have transpired where we made allowances here and that we did something different, so, uh, but I understand that.
Yes, sir, this, this was different.
Okay, very good.
Okay, all right, we're ready to vote.
I, I missed a second, I'm sorry.
Uh, I think it was Counsel Abbott, Counsel Hilliard.
All right, thank you. For some reason, I don't, Counsel.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a yes.
Yeah, you're, I have you out.
He's not here.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, is it unanimous?
One second.
Okay, okay, great. That item passes unanimously. Next item, Court.
Uh, I think I got everybody, yeah, uh, we should go to twenty-nine. And actually, I'm just, since there's some changes inside the actual resolution itself, I'm gonna read this synopsis that actually came, uh, later for this meeting. Some changes to this item, so I'll read that synopsis instead of the one on the agenda. A resolution pursuant to eleven dash forty dash one in section sixteen dash eleven dash nine point one, Codes of Alabama nineteen seventy-five, authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement with the Birmingham Board of Education in an amount not to exceed, and we should strike one thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and make that six thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars to provide the following goods. and we should strike $1,338 and make that $6,338 to provide the following goods and services for the benefit of students, the Birmingham City Schools, general education purposes for the students in need at Jackson Olin Schools. And this language also is inside of the resolution that's being added here. Smith Middle School, $1,350. $150 for school nurses office, $100 for girls basketball, $1,000 for professional development, $100 for boys basketball. Sun Valley Elementary School, $1,500, $1,000 for the reading no, carpet and mu- mural and library and $500 for the supplies for the nurses office. Huffman High School, $1,650. Travel for the athletic programs. Putman Middle School, $500 for the cheerleaders. Said funds will be, will come from the District 9 discretionary funds, $1,338. And discretionary numbers, did that change? It's the same. And underlying, just District 1 discretionary funds, $5,000. Uh, 110, 4210, uh, 4212 and 52714.
All right, we're ready to vote.
Motion.
Uh, it's a motion.
Second.
All right, it's councillor Williams, President Protem Alexander. Okay, that item passes. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
All right, should go to 33. Item 33, a resolution confirming the appointment of two members to the Arlington Assembly Board. One term expiring April the 30th, 2021, and one term expiring April the 30th, 2022.
Thank you, uh, yes, sir, they were.
They were in the packet.
They're in the packet and we had them at our special call meeting on Friday, but they're in, they're back there. We have, uh, John King, uh, replacing Natalie Sperling and Mr. Elias Hendricks replacing Peggy Shook. And, uh, Mr. King would go into the, uh, term expiring in, uh, April 2021. And, uh, Mr. Elias will be April 30th, 2022. So I'd like to move to close those nominations.
Second.
Okay. All right, voting should be up.
Excellent choices.
That vote should be up.
Okay, thank you, Mr. King, Mr. Hendricks, for appointing to Arlington Board. Thank you, next item.
Should be item number 48. It's withdrawn and then moved to 65. On page 17. Item 65, a resolution setting a public hearing March 24th, 2020 to consider the adoption of an ordinance to amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham. Case number ZAC 2019 dash 28, to change zone district boundaries from MUM to QC2 filed by Bernard C. Bugs Jr., owner for the property located at 2416 Caution Road and situated in northeast quarter of section 14, Township 16 South, range to west Birmingham.
All right, is there a motion, second? All right, Dr. Quinn, President Protem Alexander.
All right, I'm.
What are we doing?
We're just setting a public hearing.
Oh, set in a public hearing, okay.
Councillor Smith, I don't, oh, no, she's here, okay, that's it.
Okay, all right, that item passes for the public hearing. And, um, just want to make sure councillor Woods and all that, we make sure we notify the community. That was an issue that they mentioned last week. So we could please make sure we, um, notify the community about the, uh, the, uh, hearing that will take place on the 24th. So, all right, Mr. Clerk.
Item 67, receiving the emergency repair notice from the purchasing agent relative to the emergency repair of the window at east end of the library. And that's it for agenda items.
Okay, uh, we need to suspend our rules for our speakers.
Should be miss Bell, Pat Bell.
I was gonna say good morning, but it's good afternoon, how you doing?
No, it was feeling a little cool. Good morning, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Here in his accent.
All right, I have three minutes, so.
Yeah, I tell you, and I am about to lose my transportation. Okay, well, I just wanted to thank you for giving me a chance to talk. I'm talking about African-American History Month and you're talking about inclusiveness. We wish we had that 10,000 that you have on the item for Duda. But we are celebrating with less than three, less than, well, less than 300. Because we're just gonna gather outside. I wasn't able to get the, um, uh, funds together for getting the, uh, park. But we're just going to stand out and acknowledge the forerunners. Oh, wow, what 10,000 could have done to help us celebrate these people and the accomplishments of, um, of the, um, uh, forerunners of, of the civil rights movement. And so we're gonna be there. You've, I'm sure you have all received, including the mayor, the announcement. We've had some commercial spots that we are running as well. And, um, I just hope next year that we can, uh, celebrate the way you're going to do on Duda Day. What the contributions that the masses of the people have contributed to the city of Birmingham. And, uh, so I just wanted to invite all of you. You all have your, your, uh, emails. I sent everybody an email. Uh, Ms. Alexander, you were the last one because I thought I didn't have your email. But, uh, you finally got one. And I think I had everybody except Mr. Hunter. He's the only one that I didn't ever get his, uh, email together. But we're gonna be there at 1 o'clock. So if you think it's, uh, to the, uh, best interests of the council to celebrate African-American History Month, please join us. And, uh, we are telling people all over the world, I was invited by some conservative, African-American conservatives, and I invited the former attorney general. And of course, he told me he may not be able to put it on his schedule, Attorney Jeff, former Attorney General Jeff Sessions. But, um, I just want to thank you again for allowing me to say this to the citizens of Birmingham. I understand that, uh, 16th Street has approximately 100,000 people coming to our, to the church to learn about the culture and how we were able to contribute as a city to the changing of laws in the United States of America. So this means as much to me as, as Duda Day. And I hope it means that much to all of you. God bless you and hope to see you on, on Thursday at Kelly Ingram. And Mr. Parker, I'll call you if, you know, if you think there's anything you can do as my councilman to help us celebrate.
Sandra Hatch.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good morning to the council, big heart.
I was just saying good afternoon, I was just speaking.
Good morning to the council and to the mayor's office as well. Hey, y'all, wanna talk about epidemic, a little, a bad news this morning? I want to just remind you, uh, y'all, we got a thing going on in this country, y'all, this, uh, coronavirus. And it kind of been in my spirit. I just want to know, is Birmingham prepared? Is something worth to happen? Because I ain't heard the gurus of UAB on TV talking about it. Ain't heard them said nothing about, we ready, we prepared or anything like that, there? And we know this thing and we're all around the country, y'all. And I know we going on with our lifestyle and all that kind of stuff, but let's pause for the calls for a minute. Lot of people dying behind that thing. And I just pray that Birmingham is prepared for this stuff. While we're bickering and arguing and going back and forth with each other, what if in the next hour, it end up in our backyard? And we're in a rush and they do all this kind of stuff and people dying all around us. See, God have his weight of taking us away from our agenda sometime. You know what I mean? He, he got his weight on him, man, something that can't be stopped. And it, it don't discriminate. It ain't black or white, rich or poor, gay or straight. It kills. And right now, we got a, a problem in this country with this coronavirus. And so I just want to remind somebody, Lord, put it in my spirit, plus say, go tell them that they better get prepared and be ready. Because normally, when UAB wanted to build a new facility, they were talking about that. They were down here talking about that. We were seeing press comes on TV every 10 minutes. But I ain't seen nobody from the city, all these different groups, I ain't seen nobody saying that on news lately. That we ready, you see Allison just all day, we don't want them in our backyard. Well, I'm pretty sure Birmingham don't want them in their backyard either. At no count of wait. And so that's just a reminder. Secondly, y'all, I want to talk about an issue I've been watching, watching about the Civil Rights Institute, about it's some financial stuff going on, all that kind of stuff. I want y'all to use wisdom and mindful, be mindful. I think, uh, Solomon, I don't think I know. Proverbs 4 and verse 7 said that the key principle is wisdom. Then he goes on to say, with all you're getting, get understanding. Y'all do know the forces behind been trying to take over the Civil Rights Institute for years. For years and years, trying to get involved in that Civil Rights Institute. So it can no longer be civil rights, it's gonna become human rights. So be mindful. There's this report going on about some stuff ain't right at the Civil Rights Institute. Because I just see a spirit in Birmingham to just make you want to throw up sometime with the future of the city of Birmingham. You know what I mean? And, and I keep hearing the word, I heard the word up here for a while, it was go, revenue, 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 revenue. How about the citizens, y'all? When's somebody gonna stand up and tell me something we can help poor people? Like going up on the mental wage, I knew they attacked y'all last time you tried to do it. But when we gonna hear something about the poor people sit up around? We hear about them when you campaigning. We talked about poor people then and the needs of the poor. But soon as seem like we get this seat, y'all, that's it, that's gone out the window. Now it's revenue, revenue, revenue. At some point, we gotta leave money alone for a minute and let's get to the needs of the people. Because we got some people in needs in this city, y'all. These neighborhoods are died out. You know what I mean, raggedly housed, the streets need to be paved and all this kind of stuff. It ain't nobody really jumping on that. We just talking about revenue, revenue, revenue. Everything ain't about revenue. At some point, it's gotta touch you what's going on. Y'all remember in John, I'm getting on out of here too. In John, uh, 11, I think, gonna be verse 25, it said, uh, Jesus wept. Remember Lazar died and Martha Mary went and told him, he wept because he had compassion. And the question I would ask us today, do we have compassion? That means sympathy for others that are less fortunate. That what that word compassion mean? Do we really have compassion for the poor? Are we just gonna continue and watch them suffer and suffer and suffer? And we go out and kick it with the wealthy and kick it with the rich and lay the red carpet out for them? While our people are suffering and crying out? That ain't right, y'all. Because ain't no more here today, gone tomorrow. And that's what I keep on reminding people in my ministry, that you can be here today, gone today. And I don't want to leave here on my dying bed saying, God, I ain't trying to help nobody, no least of them. It was all about me. To my Christian brother, and I'm getting on out here for real. Say don't mean self. Say mean serve. Who you serving? Who you going back to get? Now that you done got delivered? Did you just pray for yourself? God, if I can become a city councilor, a mayor, something like that, I ain't studying nobody else. I done got overnight. Remember the old Negro spirit, we shall overcome? Ain't no more we shall overcome, it's he shall overcome, she shall overcome. We gotta go back to we, y'all. We gotta go back to we, that we all in this together. You know what I mean? Until we get there, we ain't seen no trouble yet. It's gonna get worser and worser. You know what I mean? 7 Chronicles 714, if my people that are called by my name sit on themselves, pray, seek my faith, turn from their wicked ways. Then I would heal their land, they'll hear from heaven, I will heal their land. We got some healing to do in our land, y'all. I don't want to be a part of no mess. No, I, I told y'all, I'd rather eat crumbs with a bomb than eat sticks with a snake. You know what I mean? We gotta stop some of this stuff and just take a minute, pause for the calls and think that we in troubled, dire times. And all I'm trying to do is figure out some, some revenue, who I can be around, important people I know. That stuff ain't about nothing, y'all. Some of these folks is just raggedly on the inside, look good on the outside. You can put lipstick on a pig, he still gonna be a pig. Thank you.
Herman Hems. Rick, Rick Davis, Rick Davis? Rick Davis?
All right, we, uh, one other additional, uh, Miss Lieutenant, um, someone from the police, the FOP. Okay, I think he left too, okay. All right, um, everybody ready for their announcements, uh? Real quick, before we do that, let me just do, have one travel for Connie Horn. Um, so, um, going to Montgomery on the 26th, coming back on the 27th. And then, um, going to Nashville for, and, um, the 27th and, and coming back on the 28th. So this is an addendum, so if we could move the item for the travel for Connie Horn. Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item 7.
All right, let's move the item.
Need to say?
Yeah.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, thank you. That passes. Councillor Hoyt?
Thank you, you're so kind, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
And, and I guess I should have looked at my announcements, uh, beforehand. Um, if we can get an update, um, I think we did, we put it on the, the, um, committed the hold to get update on the Sherman.
Yes, sir, if I was going, if, if, if you'll, you want me to go ahead and announce that or come back to?
No, 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 that's fine. If we just put that on there.
It, it's on there, it's item number 18.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, very good.
Yes, sir.
And so I don't have to discuss that.
No, sir.
Um, but we do need, uh, the police to, um, to pay attention to the Ansley, um, Avenue exit. The panhandlers are knocking on people's windows. We've had at least two persons to get killed by passenger, you know, somebody shot them, they killed them or whatever. And we really need that cleaned up. And they also on Avenue I exit. Uh, but they out there and it's not safe because people do terrible things. And, um, it's not safe. And so if we can get some attention to that on all of our exits where people standing there, you know, asking for arms and what have you, uh, it just, it's a different, we got different folk now. And people trigger happy, they don't mind, you know, what's name. But it, it's, it's scary. Sometimes they run up to your, to your window and you don't know. And, uh, you don't know if they coming to ask or they coming to do whatever. So I just want to prevent something from happening. And they also said, um, Arkademia exit as well. They calling my office and telling me this and what have you. So let's be, uh, mindful of that, um, as Chief of Staff. And so we can get, kind of break that up if we can, you know, because we want to save people's lives. Uh, Bush Hill, um, meets tonight at the Bush Hills, uh, STEM Academy. STEM Academy and, um, the Planning and Zoning Committee has two, um, vacancies with respect to the Planning Commission. And we also have three vacancies with respect to, uh, the Zoning Board of Adjustments. And so this is my first time announcing it and I'll do it again next week. Um, and I think, um, uh, so we have person interested, they can, um, send, um, email, stephen.hoyt@birminghaml.gov. AL.gov.
I did announce that for you last week.
Oh, you did?
Yes, sir, I did the first week, but I mean.
So second time then, okay, good.
Yeah, I did it for you.
Okay, all right.
Yes, sir.
Excellent, so this is the second time we making that announcement.
Yes, sir.
And, um, again, just appreciate you all, um, for supporting District 8 with, uh, the, uh, Boys and Girls Club. Kudos to Mr. Adams and his team and all the board members, uh, for their work. Thanks. And it, listen, you need to go by there and see it because it's really fabulous. And I appreciate councillor Abbott. Uh, she and I had that conversation offline that we need to go ahead and finish the pool because it's always proposed that we would do the, the warm-up pool and we can hold more events if we did so. And so it would be a, a great benefit, uh, from an economic standpoint, but also to provide our young people an opportunity to learn how to swim. Uh, because you can teach someone to swim in a warm-up pool as opposed to a, an Olympic-sized pool because you can't do that. You gotta be able to stand up to teach, uh, swimming, uh, as a former, uh, swimming instructor. Thank you.
You finished, Dr. Hoyt?
Yes, yes, indeed. Thank you, sir.
All right, councillor Smith.
Thank you, President Parker. For Neighborhoods, next Monday, March 2nd. Powderly will meet at Henry Crompton Recreation Center at 4:00 PM. And Glenn Arrows will meet at St. Elias Catholic Church at 6:30 PM. For next Tuesday, March 3rd. Oakwood Place is canceled due to the election and Mason City is canceled as well. Um, just in case I don't get to say anything, uh, make sure you go vote. And I will also say that on next Tuesday, it's important we exercise our right to vote. Also, for announcements, District 6 will have our coffee with the clergy tomorrow, February 26th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Arlington House. We'll be getting the local churches involved with the community, which is very vital to helping our neighborhoods. We'll be talking about gun violence and how we can involve the churches with cleaning up the neighborhoods. There is a ribbon kind ceremony for Devon Point and Harris Project, which will be tomorrow at 1:00 PM at their location, 301 Martin Luther King Drive. Also, on Thursday, February 27th, at Memorial Park from 7, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM, the Birmingham Police Department and Birmingham Park and Recreation will be having self-defense classes as well. will be having self-defense classes as well. Um, I really enjoyed the A.G. Gaston ribbon cutting that was in Counsel Hoyt's district. Um, I had a good time. I think it's great that we're investing in our youth all crowd, all throughout the city. Um, lastly, I'm gonna ask the P.I.O. team to queue up the video from the voter training this past weekend. A big thank you to the Miles College students, uh, Mayor Woodfin, uh, we had the Huntsville Council President Keith coming, uh, a census representative, uh, just different people. I really do appreciate everybody that came out to support us, so now we'll show the video. People always say millennials don't care about the political process. There's this stigma that we don't care about anything except for social media, going to parties, and really just really making money, and, you know, this is that opposite that Generation Zers and millennials, we care about the political process.
This past week, the District Six office hosted a three-day millennial and Generation Z voter training conference. It was attended by college students from local and out-of-state universities.
If we want more leaders that look like us and care about the issues that we want, then all we have to do is vote them in.
A lot of times, people our age, we be discouraged with the political process.
With the help of groups like Urban League, Stand As One, the Birmingham and Alabama Bar Associations, local and state-elected officials, and countless others, the young voters participated in a variety of panels and activities to learn about why their vote matters.
I actually believe that the earlier you start, the longer they stay, and the perspective was for individuals like myself, sometimes you're unaware that everything that you vote on affects you in every way that you live.
To me, I am a customer to the government, so when I have issues, I feel that I should be able to come forward and voice those issues.
Counselor Smitherman says she's thankful for this important week, the awareness, engagement, and potential it has to make a real difference.
It gives me hope, meaning that if it's for, I believe that every one person that's here, that means I've reached five more people, so if about twenty people have been here, that means we've reached a hundred people, and those one hundred people will reach out to others, so it's just really about just taking one person, giving them information, and telling them to go out and have yourselves.
Thank you. Thank you, President. President Pro Tem Alexander.
Thank you, Ms. Smitherman, Mrs. Abbott, and we don't have.
We don't have a quorum. So. That's cool. Well, I'll go ahead and give my. Guess you could still give your announcement. Remarks, even though we don't have a quorum, because it doesn't matter. Uh, the World Games are coming to Birmingham, uh, in twenty-twenty. Well, well, clearly it doesn't matter, because our people have left, so, anyway, um, the World Games are coming, um, they're beginning to announce in neighborhood meetings that volunteers are needed to help with the, the World Games, and that's gonna be a very important aspect, is having smiling faces to greet people and help them figure out where they need to go. Um, I did want to congratulate Frank Adams and his entire organization on the, um, new A.G. Gaston Clubhouse. It is, uh, I know from attending a couple of other meetings there that, um, it is fabulous, but we do need that partnership, I believe, between the city and A.G. Gaston to raise the funds to build the swimming pool, because when I went to A.G. Gaston, I noticed that the swimming pool was one of the most popular places in the whole building. So I also appreciated being, uh, invited to Counsel Smitherman's Voters League luncheon, and I was glad to see how successful it was with the young people, um, learning about that, that voting thing, which is extremely important. And also the self-defense training class that's going to be at Memorial Park, I know there's some other locations, but I think for people in District Three, Memorial Park is definitely the closest place, and that will be this Thursday from six to seven-thirty, and I think that it's an important thing for us to know how to defend ourselves, and I often think, when I'm out alone in the dark, what would I do if someone jumped out and did something, and I'm not sure I would really have a great plan right now. Uh, the Budget and Finance Meeting will be held on next Monday, March ninth, twenty-nineteen, at three-thirty P.M. in Conference Rooms D and E. The agenda submissions are due on March fourth by noon. March second, which is this coming Monday, the Glen Iris Neighborhood Meeting will be held at St. Elias Maranite Catholic Church at six-thirty P.M., and the next day, Tuesday, Forest Park South Avondale Neighborhood Meet's at six-thirty at Avondale Library. I assume because that's voting day, they will be meeting in a different room from the one they usually meet in, but we want everybody to vote on March third. And the last thing is, I just want to wish my granddaughter a happy birthday. She'll be, um, twenty, no, she'll be nineteen. Time flies when you're having a good time. She's going to have her birthday on the twenty-eighth, so, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, the Fountain Heights Neighborhood Association will meet at six P.M. at the Fountain Heights Rec Center. Crestwood North Neighborhood Association also meets at six-thirty P.M. at Girls Inc. Uh, I want to remind folks that, um, all this month, uh, Birmingham Civil Rights Institute has been doing half off of annual memberships, um, for, on Tuesdays, so today is the last Tuesday of, uh, Black History Month that they're running that, uh, special, so, um, please visit B.C.R.I.'s website, and you can get a half off on a membership, twenty dollars for annual membership. And then finally, on March, uh, second, on Monday, uh, College Hills Neighborhood Association will meet at six P.M. at the J.C. C.E.O. Building on Eighth Avenue West. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Just some announcements from District Seven. Being a strong advocate for Girls and STEM and those programs, I do want to recognize the passing of NASA mathematician, Mrs. Catherine Johnson. She was one of the inspirations for the movie Hidden Figures, and she passed away yesterday at the age of one hundred and one, and, uh, we know of her works and what she did to ensure that our men, uh, returned safely home from space, so thank you, Mrs. Johnson, for your work. Also, we had already, uh, given a resolution of congratulations, but I do want to mention that Mrs. Yula Mae Owens Creer will turn ninety on Saturday, February twenty-ninth, so we were happy to provide her with that recognition from the District Seven Office. The neighborhood meetings that are coming up, the Riley Trevalik Special Call Neighborhood Meeting will be held this evening, February twenty-fifth, at six P.M. at the Riley Community Center. The Tarpaulin City Neighborhood will meet at Mount Olive Baptist Church, that is Thursday, February twenty-seventh, at six P.M. The Powderly Neighborhood Meeting will be held at Harrison Park Rec Center, Monday, March second, at four P.M., and the Grisella Heights Neighborhood Meeting will be held at the Lawson State Community College Conference Room on Thursday, February twenty-seventh, at six P.M. Upcoming events that we wanted to make note of, the Winona High School Choir will be in concert this evening for a Black History Month concert at Powderly Library, and that's this e, afternoon at five-thirty, and the Winona High School, Dr. Goldsmith and his staff, they will be hosting a Wall of Fame recognition program, and that will be on Monday, March second, at nine-thirty, so we'll be interested to see who joins that wall of fame. Uh, I do have some announcements from District Nine, if you'll allow me. So on behalf of District Nine, they, uh, would like to, uh, note that the Dolomite Neighborhood Meeting will be tonight at six P.M. at the Dolomite Westfield Community Center. The Smithfield Community Meeting is tonight at six P.M. at Parker High, I think that's already been announced, and the Enon Ridge Neighborhood Meeting is Thursday, February twenty-seventh, five P.M. at New Salem Baptist Church. Counsel Hilliard also wanted to give, uh, no, Dolomite Neighborhood Secretary Amelia Harville congratulations on her debut in the play Justice on Trial, and that'll be at six P.M., February twenty-seventh, at the Patton Creek Fifteen Movie Theater. Monday, March second, at nine A.M., Southampton Elementary will be having their fourth annual career fair. And Monday, March second, the Sherman Heights Neighborhood will meet at five-thirty at Morningstar Baptist Church, and Central Park Neighborhood Meeting, Central Pre, excuse me, Neighborhood Meeting will be held at five-thirty P.M. at the House Sanford Park Recreation Center. And, Mr. Hilliard, just wanted me to remind you all that it is District Nine time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, just real briefly, want to thank the officers of Shelby, Southward, and Picard, um, for being with us today. Uh, with that, one quick thing, uh, Committee Hold is going to be next Wednesday and Thursday Special Call. We have eighteen items, so we'll start Wednesday, and wherever we stop on Wednesday at five-fifteen or five-twenty, we will continue on next Thursday, so, um, anyway, you'll should get the agenda. I think it includes everything we've talked about, um, and so we're gonna add the Crossplex Pool Project that goes on that particular, uh, agenda for next week. So, anyway, um, that is about it, so with that, is there's a motion?
Happy Mardi Gras. Forgot to announce that.
That's right.
Happy Mardi Gras, everybody. Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
All right.
All opposed?
Thank you.